Everybody, it's eight thirty. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. Our first item is the approval of the agenda and we do have one request, agenda addition, a request to approve a revised alternative for the Family Service Center parking lot. And then also, just a note that there is a typo on the consent agenda item based with the date. It should read June 6, 2017, not 2018.
Move your approval of the changes?
Second.
All right. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Moving to our employee recognitions. Good morning. Is this working?
Yep, it's on.
Our first one this morning is Wendy. Wendy Kursnack, she's 20 years. Yeah. Presented in grateful recognition for 20 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County citizens. Thank you so much. I think Bill wants, you can stay up here for a minute. Are you gonna talk to me?
Yeah, we are here today to celebrate 20 years from Wendy. And I have not figured out really who runs the Clay County Sheriff's Office. If you would've been there today, you know who they are. So, we're here and, you know what Wendy? You only had 20 more years than that. One of the things that Wendy does though, she always, she works with the civil guys. So she's doing all their paperwork and helping them, so we appreciate her. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we have Nancy Livinggood and she has 30 years with corrections. Good morning Nancy.
Good morning.
And this is presented to you in grateful recognition for 30 years of outstanding and dedicated service to Clay County citizens. Thank you very much.
Congratulations for 30 years, so now you only have 20 years. Well, thank you for what you've done for us.
And finally, we have Cheryl Grandways. Cheryl, 40 years. Cheryl is the longest-serving employee in the, in, for the county. It's amazing. It's fantastic that you've been with, and in for the motor vehicle department, which isn't always easy to work.
No, it is not.
Well, congratulations. Presented in grateful recognition for 40 years of outstanding and dedicated service.
Thank you.
And that is true dedication.
Thank you.
Laurie, do you wanna say something?
Cheryl, do you start with your ten or what?
Okay.
Well, Kenny, you pretty much said what I was gonna say. Cheryl's been here obviously for 40 years, which is currently the longest-serving employee that we have. It's only one person that I know that was longer, and that was Brian Bernstrom. That's the only one I can think of that was longer. And I'm slowly creeping up on you Cheryl, but I'm not quite there yet. But Cheryl has been doing an awesome job in motor vehicles. She's been the supervisor for a long time. And it's, there's been some trying times out there, especially the last couple of weeks. But Cheryl has done a really good job communicating with the customers and relating and turning the motor vehicle department into a place where it's not the typical look of a motor vehicle when you go and see that. People actually, we get good comments. There's always a few negatives, but we actually get more good comments of our motor vehicle department than the negatives. So, thank you very much Cheryl.
That motor vehicle department's come a long way Cheryl, since when it was in the basement here, huh? All right, well, congratulations to you all and thanks again for your service. We'll move into citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda this morning? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from July 11th and July 18th.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second, very presciently. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. All right, we'll move into our eight thirty-five item. That's a budget presentation from our county attorney, Brian Milton. Good morning Brian.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, page eighteen, here.
Page eighteen, all right. All right, Brian, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you. Good morning all. Thanks for having me and allowing me to present the budget. I solidly put 15 minutes on it for me. I don't think I'll take 15 minutes, but whatever questions you may have. But I will just say, last year, we had a lot of discussion about budgets and the fact that we really were in need of some assistance. And so, I'll just thank you upfront that last year's budget was a difficult budget and that we were asking for two new people. And, and you allowed for that and it's been a great assistance. We have one new person hired now and that's really helped to take some of the workload off. And then we'll hire another here in October. So, so with that, you know, my budget and looking at it, we can go through whatever part, but everything that we look at or any type of increase that we have is due to salary and the increase in salary and then insurance and parent and social security beyond that. So those are the main increases that I would have due to having those two new people from last year. And so you see that reflected in the budget. But beyond that, I have not looked to add anything to my budget per se. The increases really are just cost of living, increases for salary. Our Moorhead Prosecution piece, you see in there, they continue to, at least right now, maintain two attorneys and two legal secretaries that they pay for. That's in there budgeted. We're negotiating now with the City of Moorhead for the contract upcoming in the next, for eighteen, hopefully eighteen, nineteen. We're looking for a multi-year contract from them. So that's reflected in there.
Brian, is that contract up now at the end of seventeen?
It will be up, correct. Right. It'll be due, and we're currently talking with Chris now and Pat some meetings, so we're starting to work on that. So that's in progress, I guess we could say. Otherwise, probably the only other thing, if you look through everything and any questions you may have, probably the biggest difference that you may see on the, I guess it would be the third page of the budget, restorative justice, as you recall, Michelle Losnowski was up here sometime during the past year to talk about restructuring. We don't have a current full-time restorative justice person. She's moved around her personnel within her department to help work on that. They've each taken on some of those duties. So you just see where there's a difference of salary, where it used to be a salary put in there, where it's zero, and those expenditures have been moved around to pay for other people's salaries. So, and again, that's all grant-funded with the restorative justice grant. So again, no real change there, but if you notice that, that's the big difference. Really beyond that, there's not, I guess, much else to tell you about in regard to the budget. I think it's a pretty straightforward budget this year, not asking for much new. So, that's all I have for it.
Commissioner Moynihan? I just had a question in regards to drug court, the 10,000 reduction. Is that another county's allotment? I don't recall us cutting ours back.
That's right. The county's allotment, and I'll just tell you that from last year, that's what was, that's what was paid. So I just followed what we had from the year before. So, I'm just looking, I'm just looking.
'Cause it just said that all the prior years were 30 and
Right.
The eighteen is twenty.
Yeah, and so, so all I can tell you is I followed what we had from this year, which was we had paid out 20.
Okay.
And maybe Brian can...
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Moynihan, I believe we increased that by 10,000, didn't we Laurie, when we went through it?
Yeah. Because we thought it was in... Yeah, I'm paying out 30 for, since 2015.
Yeah. Okay. And so, I mean, I would ask that that be 30,000. If so, I, what I really did is I thought that we had changed that for some reason, made it to 20, so I budgeted 20 instead of 30. But if 30 is what it's supposed to be, then I would just ask that. I mean, it's obviously needed. It's well utilized to keep the drug court going and so.
Yeah, I thought we'd visit about that Brian, when you, when we came down and visited about that increasing.
Right, so it's one thing that I forgot to change.
And that's fine. I agree. I think it's a very valuable program.
Right, it really is.
I think it's really cost...
And I know Judge Lawson's been up here for both the Veterans Court and the Drug Court. I know all of you are well aware of the benefits from it. So, I think what I did was just I followed what had been paid out. So, again, if the budget's supposed to be crippled, it'd be 30,000. That'd be the one thing I just would...
Laurie will make that change.
Yeah, or change then, so, okay.
Brian, the, the general services to the city's prosecution, I see it's actually down a couple thousand dollars. And I, I'm kinda wondering, it seems like your workload for them certainly hasn't decreased.
Right.
Why are we, why are we seeing a reduction in revenue from the cities?
So every, every year, we go through, we work through with them and they pay for two attorneys, two legal secretaries, and we've always agreed, or came to the agreement many times back, they pay for the two lowest. And so, or two, excuse me, the two lowest costs. Meaning, I mean, they're getting the experience of the entire office, but they pay for the two newest attorneys, the two newest legal secretaries. Every year, we then end up doing a reconciliation, depending on each year, if we haven't had much turnover, and let's say we didn't have turnover for five-plus years, that would just continue to increase. And then in fact, they'd actually pay more. And the reconciliation may say you have to come back and pay extra money. If we've had some turnover and what we budgeted and said this is the contract, and ends up coming less, then we'll look to return some money. So it just depends.
So, when you had the new hires, they became the new, at the beginning of the pay scale, so to speak. And so then that's, Moorhead got the advantage of that.
Correct.
And there, Clay County didn't get the advantage of it, Moorhead got the advantage.
Right, we allowed that for them to take the advantage of that, that piece of it and get the two newest. So we had, we had contracted for that back before to just allow them to have some, some savings given to the two lowest on each side. So it's just a reconciliation we do at the end of each year. So that's where we've kinda come in at the budget. We try to estimate the best we can. I can tell you what I've gone to Moorhead with, just as you know, we've talked about before, our increased workload. I've gone to them with a request for three attorneys and two legal secretaries and to increase the, the contract itself, just because we've really basically maintained the same contracts since 2001, or, well, there's some change, but at a minimum, since 2005. And so, things have not stayed the same for the last 12 years. And so we, we're looking to request an increase from them and we're in negotiations currently and we'll keep working with them to see where that comes out.
So, so you're talking with the city manager then on that?
We are.
Okay, very good, very good, okay. Any other questions? Well, Brian, will, this will all be taken into consideration and we'll, certainly you'll know by, by the time we do our primary levy, so.
Sounds good, appreciate it.
All right, thank you for your...
Hey, you know, if you have other questions, feel free to contact me anytime.
One thing about, one thing about your budget Brian, is you've always tried to keep it right there.
You try to keep it pretty good.
Appreciate that.
All right, thanks all.
Thank you. All right, I don't see Bruce here yet. Does, was Bruce gonna be here to give that presentation on the budget? On the financial audit? I think he's, okay, I'm assuming he's gonna be here. All right, so we'll, why don't we take that agenda addition while we wait for Bruce? Brian, we've had some developments with the parking lot and the Family Service Center. Would you care to update us please?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The agenda addition is, well, it was to the highway department and the engineers are going to be here to explain the change. But, what happened with this is last Friday morning, the highway department and the contractor called me over to the parking lot in front of the Family Service Center, where you're having that milled and overlaid. And they showed me that after taking two inches of the asphalt surface off, that there was some real spongy spots down there and they dug below that. And that does not have a Class V base on it. And the way the engineer explained it to me was the fact that when you put asphalt on top of organic material or black soils and things, that it can suck the moisture right out of that, so you lose about an inch of that. So with taking two inches off of the surface of that asphalt, now you have a pretty spongy base. And frankly, they said, we don't know if it's even solid enough to add the new surface on it without taking the other off, putting a foot of Class V gravel base on there, and then resurfacing it. And the second page of your addition there shows what the contractor will do this additional work for. And what you'll see in the yellow is the original contract was for $57,000. And they said they could try to put it back the way it was bid, but they're not recommending that at all. And then the revised, the red, the revised bituminous alternative is another $35,000. And that is to mill off the other than three, three inches of asphalt, replace that base with Class V, so, and put the material, that fabric underneath, so you have that protection between the two. And they then project that would last at least 20 years versus the 10 years, and per year cost is, is cheaper. And then of course, the other alternative is to do the concrete on top, which is quite a bit more, and that'll last quite a bit longer as well. What we did do yesterday is the capital improvement committee met. You have two commissioners on that, Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Haney are on that. We met at 11 o'clock yesterday. We discussed these alternatives. And the committee is recommending that we go with the revised bituminous alternative for the $35,000 additional, to do it right. So, would certainly entertain any questions from other members of, or the two commissioners.
Oh, I was just gonna comment that we're gonna be using more bituminous by going to that alternative, second alternative. But, the company has said if we buy more of that stuff, that they're gonna give it to a cheaper price. I think it went from 180, $108 a ton down to $85 a ton.
For the Class V or for the...
Oh, for the bitumen, for the pavement, for the two minutes. So that's gonna break down. Also, if we didn't do anything, they said they can't fill the trucks up, 'cause they don't know whether it's gonna go, be too heavy. So they'd have to, you come in with half loads. So that would increase the cost again, so.
Says enough right there.
Yeah, so.
Pump truck.
Yeah, so it was just, and then we looked at, well, should we go with the concrete? We're looking at 35 years. I don't know whether we're, you know, if it's 20 years, I think it'd probably even be plus 20 years. You know, we do a good job on it now, so the committee sort of decided we should go with the 20. It's our recommendation to go with the 20 years. And I would make a motion that we do do that.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Brian, the, I talked to you this morning about this and you mentioned in terms of, that's separate from our other projects and you, can you tell us where the dollars are coming from?
Very, very good question, Mr. Chair. That is not part of the correctional facility and the law enforcement center. We had meant to do this a year or two ago, but then we knew that the city was asking us to do, change design of the entrances a little bit, so then we decided to hold off and do it this year. So that is coming out of, I'll say two pots, the Family Service Center first, and if they don't have enough dollars in the Family Service Center budget to cover it, then we will take dollars out of the capital improvement fund. And the capital improvement fund, as today, sits at $287,000 balance. We do have two obligations. One was the floor for the heating plant that we added. That was around, I think, $18,000. And then there was a electrical problem over there, which we spent approximately $25,000 out of. And that has not been credited to the account. So it brings the count down to around $250,000. And we would be possibly using up to $35,000 of that. So, and, well, we're halfway through the year and, so we're in pretty good shape in regards to those dollars.
So assuming this motion passes now, will the, this was gonna be a one or two day project. I'm assuming that extends it quite a bit if they're to pull, fill, or bring in new stuff.
Well, yeah, I figured it was gonna be four to five days and they will add probably approximately a week. And that was the negative of going with the concrete. That would add several more weeks to it too. So, yeah, they'll mill it off. They figured they could get started tomorrow on it, finish the mill, and then haul in the Class V or remove the substance of haul in Class V. So it shouldn't delay it too much.
Very good. Any comments, questions?
I just have a comment. I'm hopeful that we can last longer than 20 years, considering it's not on a, I mean, there's not a whole lot of heavy equipment driving through there.
That's right. That's exactly right.
That was one other thing we were looking at, possibly limiting the weight of trucks going through there, that we would limit, heavy trucks would drive it through that parking lot. When it comes to delivery trucks, to limit the weight.
Were they delivered to the front?
Yeah, where's their other options for delivery?
I don't know what the...
The self delivery?
What our options are.
Yeah, they'd have to park and...
Park at the street or something.
Well, that's something that they'll talk about in your committee. All right, any other thoughts? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Thank you Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just, I guess I have to say this too. We know, we know there's been a lot of money spent around here and this was kind of a disappointment to hear this and have to come back and ask for more. But, when you have this many construction projects going on, there's going to be surprises as well, so. So thank you for your consideration.
We still have to do it right. All right, our next item is the 2016 Annual Report and Financial Audit. Bruce Saulwright. And you got your, a couple, you got three members of your board. You wanna all come up? Grab a couple extra chairs there. So we have Jay, Gary, and Mark, and we have Bruce. Good morning.
Good morning.
Bruce, do you wanna start off with your report?
Yeah, welcome this opportunity to come here. Sure doesn't seem like a year ago we were here presenting the 2015 Annual Report, but we were, so another year's passed and happy to say I think things are good with the watershed. It's always good to have these open lines of communication with the commissioners. You play a very important role regarding the watershed, regarding your appointments. And we recognize the, you know, what Clay County means to the Buffalo River watershed district. So, I think it's good that we get here on an annual basis, or more frequently if needed, to give you an update. 2016 was a good year for us. We were sorry to see Manager Kabila move to Fargo. With that, of course, two sides to every coin, we welcome Manager Leach. And respect your appointment in that regard. Jay brings a whole lot of experience to the water world, to the Buffalo River watershed district, and has been a good asset in our addition to, to the watershed. Things are going well. You know, the district was enlarged here about five years ago. Now we have the Otter Tail River. There's been some increased work in that regard. We did get two new managers out of that new area, so seven-person board, and I think that's been working out quite well. We still have rules and regulations, much like, you know, planning and zoning does, so we deal with permits whenever farmers or landowners want to change something regarding water. Last year, records show that we processed 127 applications. So, it's a good way, I think, for the board to keep their finger on the pulse of what's happening on the landscape. We're not there to be a hindrance or make people jump through hoops and hurdles. We meet every two weeks. We can usually process an application almost the day that it comes in. And 99% of them are approved, but probably 90% of them go out with some conditions on them, such as a culvert size or a culvert elevation. So I think it's just that coordination out there that makes the permitting system work real well, in my mind. The board is in the process of updating their rules. Right now, we're working with Clay County actually, so we can incorporate the new language regarding the buffer legislation into those rules, but we hope to have that done here by the end of the year. Five years have passed already since we've moved into our new office, thanks to you in that regard. That is now paid for, so that building is just, we're working on the maintenance of it and general operation. But, the timing couldn't have been better to make that happen, in my mind. And I think all of you have been there. If you haven't, we're in Commercial Park. We've got plenty of parking. There's lots of room and that building has worked out well. This year, in fact, we've got a hearing coming up now on August 15th, Tuesday, August 15th. We're trying to get the Wolverton Creek Comstock Cooley project underway. That's going to be about $11 million project. We've secured approximately half of the money needed to make that happen. That will be built in phases, so it will take some time to probably get that done. Landowners in Clay and Wilton County are anxious to see that happen. Some of those people are dead and gone. But, I mean, they started talking about the need for a project out there in the 1950s. So, what's gonna be nice about it is that when that creek is restored, protection measures are gonna be put in place so that we just don't repeat what we've done in the past and fill it back up again with sediment. So, landowners are looking forward to that. That is an important resource for Clay County. We know that the cities of Fargo and Moorhead take most of their drinking water out of the Red River, just downstream of Wolverton Creek. So getting the habitat out there, the buffers out there, getting that creek restored, that's gonna be a big process for the watershed. And like I said, we hope to get that started here, yep, this fall. 2016, of course, seen us complete the Old Port project. And Kevin knows full well, I can't believe 20 years, Kevin, have passed since you guys were hauling square bales up there and building dikes and doing whatever you could, all to kinda lose the battle at the end of the day. But, now we have permanent protection and the levies are being certified. We will do a open house and kinda commemorative ceremony that, regarding the completion of that. That was a huge undertaking for the watershed. And Kevin knows well, what that's meant for that Old Port area, now that it's part of City of Moorhead. So, nice to see that done.
What is the status of the, of the certifying? Is that, I think it's supposed to be like six months?
Well, it's a give and take. We sent, submitted everything here right after the first of the year. FEMA came back with about three pages of questions, you know, issues that need to be addressed. Alteg has addressed most of that. We're hoping Labor Day timeframe, Kevin, that second phase of that will be certified.
That's kinda the timeframe that I thought would...
Yeah. So now we go into maintenance mode on that and we're trying. There's, you know, all these little things. You've got some weeds and some thistles and...
Is that still Chris from Alteg that has had him?
Yes, Chris Carlson with Alteg is still. And obviously, we'll keep the county abreast of when we get our date set for commemorative ceremony here. And there's some people to thank. Senator Langs has played a big role in getting us some major funding when needed to make that happen. So, a huge project and nice to see that basically done with. The annual report includes our audit. I don't know that there's a whole lot in there. What you will see is that in 2016, our revenues doubled, and primarily that was money coming in for Old Port. So, 2015, our total revenues were 5.3 million. We went to 11.3 million in 2016. What I always say, money comes into the watershed and the money goes back out again for projects and programs to help the citizens of the watershed district. and programs to help the citizens of the Watershed District. Hand in hand with that, of course, then expenses do the same. 2015 expenses, 5.4 million. 2016 expenses, 9.3 million. So again, money comes in, money goes back out to serve the citizens of the district. You know, what's happening today, maybe a quick update. We were selected for a One Watershed, One Plan. That will get started here with a kickoff meeting or an orientation session, I think, later this month. And we'll be working with the Soil and Water Conservation District and County Water Planning, et cetera. That is the way of the future, and we look forward to getting that done. That will actually be about a two-year process with all the communication and coordination meetings and looking at the size of the district.
When you say One Watershed, One Plan, what does that mean to...
Well, it'll take the Buffalo River and the Watershed District as we know it today, and we'll end up with one plan that will suffice for the Soil and Water Plan. It'll suffice for the County Local Water Plan. It will no longer be Buffalo Red's plan. It's going to be One Watershed, One Plan. It'll be a plan that we all have ownership in and all need to be a part of to develop. So the thought process there being, the state and legislators and the counties looked at, and this is going back five, six, seven years ago, sometimes you had three different plans, and we were all, and they all said the same thing. And could, was there some efficiency that could be realized there by saying, what if we just had one plan and we all worked out of it? And I think then we're also going to be able to identify what are the most important projects? Where can you get the most bang for the buck? What projects should we be applying for funds for in Buffalo or in the One Watershed, One Plan? Rather than, Clay County has three applications in, Becker County has four applications, and Wilken County has two applications in, and we're competing against ourselves. Now we're going to start looking at the Watershed District in the hole, and I think we'll be able to prioritize which projects are needed and work together on getting them done. So that's out there, One Watershed, One Plan. We'll get that started here. I mentioned Wolverton Creek. We've got some exciting new projects in and around the Barnesville area with the South Branch of the Buffalo River, Stony Creek, Whiskey Creek. I've been doing this, we're close to going on almost 40 years, and our creek systems have just really had a point now where they've just worn out. I mean, been 100 years of using them and abusing them and not putting any money back into them. So these major rivers and tributaries and waterways, such as Stony Creek, the South Branch of the Buffalo River, the time has come that we start taking a look at doing the repairs needed to those outlets, getting them fixed so that they'll serve long into the future for the drainage and the flood control and the things that we need them to do. But most importantly, putting in place the measures that we just don't, hopefully, fill them right back up again with sediment. The problems out there, hopefully, some of you can get on our tour. It's coming up on, I think, technically, the first day of fall, Thursday, September 21st. So invites will be coming out to you, and we'll take you around. And, I mean, we got water in the South Branch trying to run in a creek system three feet above the natural ground level. I mean, the dykes aren't even holding the water in anymore. The creek is filled in. And it's major money to go out there and clean that out. It needs to be cleaned, and you need to do all of that with the understanding that you're just not fixing one problem and moving it downstream on someone else. So therein lies the complexity of what we deal with. But with these comprehensive projects where you can restore the creek, put in some flood control, probably an impalement or retention area in conjunction with your project, the end result is you can go to the people in Clay County and Saban or wherever and say, no, yeah, we cleaned the river and we fixed it down here, but we actually reduced flows at this point by 15, 20, 30 percent. So that's the long-range goal. It's not easy. Takes money to make that happen, but we're going to continue to work on that. Last but not least, the board is looking for some help to work with me. We're hoping to hire probably an intern here before the end of the year. I promised a few farmers in Clay County, I'm not going to retire until I get some projects done, so I'm going to be around for a little bit. But the intern will work with me and learn what I do, and we'll... And there's plenty of work to do with all the buffer stuff right now. So I'm looking forward to getting that extra assistance.
Very good. Questions or comments from you about the watershed?
A few weeks ago, I had received a notice from the Army Corps that they were 35% into the design on the diversion project in Minnesota. And I forwarded that on to our county engineer, concerned that we address that design, that we're not talking about support and not support, but if the thing goes through, what would we, as Clay County, want to make sure we were satisfied with the design? And I believe the watershed did make some comments on that.
Both Bruce and Mark and I met with David.
With David, okay.
Yep. And had some really, I think, important points to consider that our engineering department hadn't thought of.
Okay. And I saw that, and I, you know, when I hear of the, you know, the Comstock Cooley issue and even the Wolverton issue, I, you know, if there's, if there's things that are, that are related to those things, too, that, that we could, you know, maybe look to the diversion authority to assist with, you know, that's going under the assumption that this thing goes through. We have to understand, I know not everybody sitting in front of me here supports it, but that's fine. But the fact of the matter is, if it goes through, we want to make sure that we've done, you know, everything that we can to make sure that the design is the best possible for Clay County.
One of the best things Bruce mentioned when we got done it, he said, well, now tell them this is our 35% comments, because the project, you know, was the 35% design.
Right.
Because you might have more comments when it gets 80, 90% done. So we left that option open.
Well, and I think, you know, I, we're waiting now for the judge to make his ruling, and we'll see what happens in that regard. We know the position that the state of Minnesota and primarily our governor and the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources has taken on the project. They're entitled to that. We'll see what happens in that regard. And as I've stated when we've been here before, what, you know, the watershed is not involved right now with the most recent Joint Powers Agreement in that regard. I hope that the people in Clay County look to the Watershed District as kind of being the water leaders, so to speak, representing their interest. And whatever role we can play as this plays out over time, because you're out today, it doesn't mean things can't change tomorrow. So whatever role the watershed can play and whatever role these people are the ones that make those decisions, not I. So we'll see what happens in that regard.
I do want to comment, because I've been active with this board and that board, clearly. I honestly can say that I think since the decision with the Joint Powers, that has not limited your involvement and advocacy for the landowners. And I think that was kind of the major point that I remember coming out of all those meetings. It was controversial, and there was, it seemed like all got covered at those meetings was should we, shouldn't we, shouldn't we, should we? And now it really has been a good line of communication. So I think one of the concerns from this board was that not having a presence there would limit the amount you could help out with it, and I don't think that that's happened.
Well, we, the watershed, we represent the citizens of Moorhead and the citizens of Dilworth and the citizens of Holy Cross Township and the citizens of Comstock, Minnesota. And we know water projects are never easy. And this one is huge, and it's not going to be easy. So what role we can play in that regard, time will tell.
All right. Anything else on the report?
We have our budget hearing coming up now on the 28th of August. I don't see anything really changing. I was going to mention, last but not least, I did get the notice, the Red Board went back to taxing a full levy for 2018. I don't know what their reasoning is behind that. As Manager Leach can attest, he's working with the Red River Watershed Management Board right now. They're going through some reorganizations, some types of things. We continue to keep those lines of communication open, and we'll see where that takes us. So there's some big changes, I would say, that's happening right now with the Red Board. So we'll keep you posted in that regard.
Very good. All right. Thank you for your report, Bruce. Thank you all. And then next, we have, while we're here, we have a request for two reappointments. And I guess I was understanding that those positions had not been advertised, but they have been advertised, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, they have been advertised.
We have gone through that process. Okay, so... And in our packet, we did get letters from both Mr. Anderson and Mr. Van Amberg stating that they're both interested in serving another three-year term. Is that correct?
I just want to comment on the applications first, going to the comment we just had about the 35%. I really appreciate the presence of Mark, your knowledge from the township level. I think you were able to bring comments to that planning that really had been overlooked, and I think was really instrumental in that. And I also think because I represent farmers in your district, you know, neighbors, I field calls all the time, and we're going back and forth. So I appreciate the presence and the voice that you've given to landowners, but also the knowledge as you've kind of settled into your role as a watershed manager. So, you know, I know you don't get a whole lot of compliments a lot of times, but I'm going to tell you that I think you're doing a really good job. So, so thank you. And Jerry, to your point as well, your longstanding presence at the watershed is something that I think is very valued. I also think that you bring a, an angle to the board that is also very important. I think there's a pretty good dynamic of personalities and background experiences, and I really appreciate your presence as well. And, you know, these gentlemen, all three of them have been at SWCD meetings, they've been at Basin Commission meetings, they've been at watershed meetings. And I appreciate having members, specifically people that we appoint, who are very present and active. And I think that we definitely have that with the three of you. So thank you, Jerry, for your presence as well.
Thank you.
All right. So we have the two positions open, and I think those, we need to appoint those by the 31st of August. So what's the board's wishes?
I guess I could agree with what Jenny is saying, that, you know, when, I haven't attended that many of the watershed board meetings, but I, the ones I've attended, I've impressed with the involvement of these people and what they've done for the watershed board. And I'd make a motion to reappoint these two gentlemen.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion in a second.
I want to, I want to comment, I couldn't disagree more with Mark on the diversion project and his stance there, but I understand what he's doing there. And I, there was times when I felt that, you know, you said you'd be open on that thing, and I didn't know just how much openness there was there. But that's, the fact of the matter is, is the Buffalo Red Watershed Board is not going to determine whether that project ever gets done or not anyway. And I've always told people, when it comes to these water projects, I put a lot of faith in the, into the engineers and the science behind it. And I'm assuming you all have to do that, and you do that as well. And I happened to run into Eric Jones one day, and I was talking to him about this reappointment. And he gave high praise to your work on all the other projects. And we can't, I can't let my decisions be based on one thing that goes on when there's many, 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 many projects that go on. And I, there's a lot of people who are one-issue candidates. They'll vote anything on one issue. I won't. So with that, I, you know, I certainly have respect for what Eric said and all your other work. And I...
And I appreciate that. And if this thing goes through and, you know, it's in the courts and it's, and stuff, and once the decision's, and once it's through the courts and stuff, I'll do everything I can to...
Make it best for Clay County.
That's the way, you know...
And to make it best for Clay County.
Right. That's, we don't live in Russia or China. We live in the United States. We can differ, and we can, you know, and we go have a beer.
Very good. Any other comments?
I appreciate the comments earlier that Jenny had made about where we stood as a board, you know, when the JP question was up. And as you might know, I was sort of on the losing end of that, and I thought, time is something we ought to be involved with. I will say that certainly what you said has not impeded our ability to, I think, work with the diversion authority if need be, and however we can. What it has allowed us to do is work on other projects. We were spending so much time, every meeting, with people coming in and arguing and going over things. And now, we can spend that time doing something that's really constructive. So, and I think certainly Mark brings a wealth of knowledge with the Southern Clay, Northern Wilken, and Indian issue. He keeps us up with that as well. So I thank you for your comments.
You're right. We all agree on some.
No.
They're practicing today, as well.
You get these Kansas people with...
Concordia, MSU, Moorhead Tech.
They're a different division. We can still support them, too. Okay, thanks for your comments, Jerry. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have to give final approval to that one-lot subdivision.
I never thought this one was going to show up here. I don't know. The engineer that was working on it wasn't moving as fast as the property I wanted to. Anyway, good morning. I just wanted to present to you this morning a request from the Planning Commission for final approval of a single-lot plat adjacent to the city of Glendon. And you can see it up on the board over here. It's a little bit tilted, but I think that has something to do with the new projector that you have up here that hasn't quite gotten set up yet. Anyway, this is Kelly Richards' plat. It's a single-lot plat directly adjacent to the city of Glendon in the southwest corner. It's about 120 feet wide, quarter-mile long. The intent of the plat, and it directly, it backs right up to a subdivision that Mr. Richards had purchased half of from another individual, and then he replatted it. And now he's going to be developing that subdivision and then this piece down to the bottom. The reason that he's plating a single lot, again, 120 feet wide, quarter-mile long, is to utilize it for Ustor storage facilities. So that's gotten to be a real popular item. And it's, again, it's adjacent to the city of Glendon. I'm not sure what, if this was the item that prompted the city of Glendon, but they now have extraterritorial jurisdiction for a mile. So had that been in place prior to this coming to us, it would have been their subdivision to decide whether to approve or not. Anyway, it's going to front right on County Road 17. And you can see that we couldn't put all of the buildings in one long row here. So the, starting from the very western edge is the top set of buildings, and then you connect the central set to the east end of it. So there'll be 15, approximately 15 buildings in that 120-foot-by-quarter-mile-long stretch of property in the end. So I went through the Planning Commission, was approved there. Recommendation to bring it to you. Recommendation to bring it to you is what's here today for a final approval. I guess I would ask that you take a final action, moving to approve or not approve this particular platte.
Any comments or questions?
Did the Glendon Township approve this or?
Yeah, it's been through the township and. They don't actually have subdivision regulations in the township, but he did speak to the township about it.
It's been through the township, it's been through the Planning Commission.
I'll second the motion. With the comment that I believe this was a unanimous at the Planning Commission.
I believe it was.
Good. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same?
Mr. Chair.
All right, budget, budget, budget.
I'll leave you to the fun things now.
Good morning, Brenda. Oh, we're.
He just stepped out.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brock reinforcements, Susan Roll from the auditors. All right. Okay, just to make sure, did, I think a summary went out in the board packet?
Yes.
And I do have some extra copies. Catch my breath after all those stares. I did a little bit different this year, a little bit more summarized where I really was just focusing on the levy request last year, what it's looking like this year, and highlighting some of those major areas that seem to have the biggest impact on the levy for our county and generally the requests that go with levy increases. So as you can see at the top, I've listed the 2017 levy amount that was actually levied. And then we did consider 200,000 for fund balances. But the overall total levy request was the 9.346,538. This year for 2018, the levy request is landing at 9,835,458. That is a little different than, I think, the budgets that you have in your hand. We did make one correction for our detox area, so it is lower. So that might look a little different from what you've seen before.
So the detox number isn't sixty-three, thirty-two?
No, that is the corrected number.
Okay.
Yeah. So the difference in those levy requests is 488,920, representing a 5.23 percent increase in the request. And then over to the right, I've listed those areas that are impacting that. And we have employee step adjustments. We have over a hundred employees, a hundred and ten employees that we manage in this budget. And with steps, those are the increases there. The one that's not surprising there is our out-of-home placements. So I have added an additional 200,000 to our out-of-home placement budgets. And then, once I go through this list, we'll go down into the detail. Adult mental health costs, we've talked about this over the year as well. I've added $75,000 in that area to help mitigate some of the increases that we're seeing in that area. The detox, 60,332 is an increase from last year. I did add an additional 5,000 for the county-funded burials, 29,000 for our contracted providers. And then our caseworks maintenance agreement, as you recall, we went paperless in our social service area this last year. And so we'll have an annual maintenance agreement. The majority of that goes to our vendor, Next Chapter Technology. A small portion of it goes to our IT department for their work on that project. One area that I missed in adding here is our attorney costs for the work that the county attorney's office does with our social service area. That was an increase of $23,000 from last year. We budget 268,000 for their work, primarily for our child protection cases, but some of the other areas as well. So those are the highlights and we can go down into the details.
Brenda, the 75,000, is that partly for the discussion that you're having with the correctional facility position?
It is not.
This is different than that?
Yes. None of this includes that mental health side. That's separate.
That would be Julie's budget, right?
Well, there's been some.
That's part of the discussion that we had had, that it would be between juvenile and Julie's budget on the position specifically they were talking about.
Yeah, there's been some discussion on that. And I did bring with me an itemization of that mental health side. And then a decision can be made where you want to land that. But yeah, that's separate.
So this 75,000 is for what then?
It's for all of our staff. You know, we, I get the, all of the staff grades and salaries and with steps. We have a lot of new staff, so a lot of new staff are eligible for those steps every year.
So isn't that up in the first step, I think it is?
Yep, that's the 74,000.
I'm talking about the 75,000, the third one down.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that is for mental health purchase services for our folks. If you recall, we had a conversation about our folks that are civilly committed and they go to state-operated programs.
Yes.
And the county share for those has gone up legislatively. And we're seeing a tremendous increase on those costs. So, yes, that's client-based cost. Yes, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the.
No, I guess.
Yeah.
Could have been clearer, I guess. Okay.
Okay, so out-of-home placements, maybe I did have another handout for you just to show you a little bit about our, with our trends. There we go, Grant. So there is some good news with our out-of-home placements. The top bar graph just shows you month by month. The top bar graph just shows you month by month what our numbers of kids in out-of-home placement look like. So you can see, you know, January 2016, we started off with 179. And each month it fluctuates up and down. The bottom bar graph is 2017. I apologize, the numbers are a little small. But you can see we're at, for July, we had 143 kids in care. And you can see in the beginning of the year, we started at 167. So our numbers are, our numbers of kids are dropping, which is really good. We, when you take a snapshot in time, so if I were to go into our system today and get an account of how many kids we had in care. Last week, we did that snapshot and we had 134.
That's going trending the right direction.
Yeah.
I had a question. Part of the reason for the drop, have we adopted out a bunch of children?
We have. We looked at that 134 kids and we went through the whole list. And of that 134, 64 of those kids are, we have termination and parental rights on. They are not adopted yet, so they're showing up in our numbers, but they're in that adoption process, a good percentage of them. But we did have some adoptions. We had some large sibling group adoptions. And we've just really been.
Does foster care also help bring these numbers down by having?
Foster care is included in these numbers as well. And this is all of our kids, zero to 21. Certainly when we can place kids in foster care versus a residential, it helps mitigate the cost.
Right, it's a cost savings by foster care versus other, sending them to other.
Yes. Yep. So the numbers are going in the right direction anyway. And you will see that, so if you go back to the summary sheet, out-of-home placements there. What we've given you there is really just a lengthy history. So you can just see in 2014 what we budgeted and what we actually spent. So you can see right there, we spent close to 300,000 over what we had budgeted. Likewise, for 2015, we were under budget there as well. Moving across to 2016, you'll see the biggest issue we had. We budgeted 1.8 as that net and we spent 2.8. So that's a million dollars that we struggled with for out-of-home placements. Now, if you look at 2017, we budgeted 2.3. So you can see, we've been trying to address the budget deficit and we did add some money for 2017. We're on target to spend about 2.5. So the good news is it's less than what we spent in 2.8, if things stay stable. But it's still above our budget. So what I, what we've put in the budget for 2018 is 2.5 million. So that's that 200,000 increase that's showing up at the top. Okay, so that's.
I just have a question. What does that fund balance add?
The social service fund balance is, let's see. Lori might be able to find it faster than me, but.
I actually don't have a copy.
Okay, I do have it here. So for social services, we're at 6.629. 6.6 million, 6.2.
And that's as of when?
This says, fund balance, 123116 estimated.
It's got to be pretty much done.
Yeah, this is the one you had given me just recently. Yeah. So we were 7.8 at the end of 2015 and then we went to 6.6 at the end of 2016. And that's that, those two areas, out-of-home placements and the mental health areas, which all.
Brenda, in this particular case, the out-of-home placements that we're talking about here, is this all based on or caused by the adult parenting? Or are there other, are there other?
Oh, there's other factors. But we are certainly seeing a lot of young kids in care, which the reasons for that are parental or family issues. So we are, you know, over last year, we've seen a lot of little kids in care and some babies right out of the hospital. But on the other side of it, we are seeing those adolescents behaviors and mental health. And so that's a very costly service area with the teenagers and mental health issues that we're trying to deal with. So it is really the spectrum, to be honest.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a handle on.
We are seeing a lot of substance use issues and therefore we're seeing sibling groups placed, some large sibling groups, you know, families of four and five. And then again, that mental health on the part of parents and kids. The majority of these placements, probably ninety-five, over ninety-five percent are court-involved. We have a few voluntary placements and those are typically the children's mental health, where we have parents and families that are working diligently with us, but their kids have significant mental health. So they're placed for treatment reasons. Okay, the one, you know, a couple of things about the out-of-home placements. This last legislative session, they did allocate about $5 million to help counties with the costs of the placement of Native American children. So we had to just a week or so go submit information about our costs related to Indian children. And they are going to apply a percent to that. And so counties will get some funds to help with that. That is not, I have not considered that in this budget yet.
In the revenue?
It's hard to tell what that will be. I'm guessing, just based on what I know, maybe around 100,000 for our county, but I don't know that yet. The other reason I didn't put that in here is because then we have a flip side to that good news is we are going to lose some funding for our 4E kids that are placed in certain types of facilities. And that, we're not sure about what that loss will be. So they may negate each other, to be honest. So we're trying to do a little bit more research. I think we'll have more information in the coming months and we'll make sure that we provide that to the board. But I was excited about the new revenues, but then the loss of the 4E for some of those is going to be a hit to us as well. So we're working together to try to figure out what that might look like. So, good and bad there. Okay. All right, the next area is our mental health and sex offender costs. So this is the area that you were talking about, Commissioner Campbell, with the 75,000. So these expenditures represent our hold order costs as well as when a person is civilly committed, what our county shares are for that civil commitment. So this might be an individual that maybe law enforcement picks up in the community, an individual that's maybe committed a crime, maybe not, maybe unstable in the community. And they're brought to the hospital. And we have a physician who says, oh, this individual is not, is a danger to themselves or others. And we need to look at, they sign a hold so that the individual has to stay in the hospital. And then we look at a petition for a civil commitment. Jenny works quite extensively with our office on these cases. So we might have, if the individual has Minnesota medical assistance, oftentimes Sanford or Prairie will bill medical assistance for the cost of the hold order. If there's no coverage, our office will get that, that bill and we have to pay it. So that's one part of these costs. The bigger part of these costs are when our individuals are civilly committed to a state-operated program, like our, you've heard of CBHHs before. So we have a community behavioral health hospital. They're committed. At that point, the county pays 20% of the cost of care, usually around, the cost of care is about $1,800 a day. And we pay about 20% of that. So we'll get a bill each month for our folks. But when, when the medical folks at the facility say, well, your person is stable and ready for discharge, now you have to find a place for them to go. At that point, our responsibility is 100% of that daily cost. So for every day they're there after that determination, we get a bill for 1,800 dollars a day. That change happened. You can see, if you look at our actual expenditures in 2014, we spent 330,000. And then next year, it doubled to, you know, almost doubled to 607,000. That was a direct issue of that 100% cost of county care. Because it's not more people. It was the fact that that cost shifted to us. We met with our legislators several times about this issue. I felt optimistic that we were going to see some changes this legislative session. And the only thing that changed is they decided to create a grant program. So the county money that goes into this, rather than it going into the general fund, they set it aside and now they're saying, well, counties, you can access this, but you got to submit a grant. You have to tell us how you're going to use the money to help mitigate this. So we're definitely going to watch for that grant to come out and we'll definitely look at it. But it's competitive and it was frustrating to not see that county share change. So you can see, we spent 607,000 in 2015. And our budget, you know, we just haven't been able to catch up to this issue. In 2017, or in 2016, we spent 661,000. And you can see in 2017, we've budgeted 410. I added 75,000 for the 2018 budget. That's not even getting us to where we spent for 2015 and 16. But this is really a difficult area to predict because the first five months of this year into June, actually, we had not gotten any of those letters that says your person doesn't meet level of care. So, you know, we would have been trending around that 400,000 mark. In the last two weeks, we've gotten three. The good news is, is that we've been able to get them out more quickly than we had last year. But we do have one that we're struggling with. You know, these are folks that. You know, these are folks that many placement facilities decline. They're aggressive, they're physically assaultive, they're substance using. Facilities don't want to take the liability of a placement of an individual like this, and they're under civil commitment. I know we often work with Jenny, and we're calling the state, and we're complaining about, these are the folks that need the safety net services of the state, and the state can't even help us find placements for them. So we are, we are struggling. So we've, we've got the, the two that we got the do not meet level of care letters on, we've got them out. One, we're struggling. He discharged to a chemical health facility. He ended up in the hospital, discharged back, ended up back in the hospital. He's a substance-using individual with significant mental health, and we're gonna struggle with him for a long time. But, so, it's really hard to predict where these costs will go. But I felt, you know, I certainly wasn't gonna say, well, we need to budget to six hundred and sixty-one thousand. You know, but I felt the need to maybe bump that up a little bit. But it's kind of a.
Always so much good news.
And this is an area we can watch, you know, we can come back, we can see, you know, over the summer here into September, what things are looking like. The problem with these expenditures is the billing is so far behind. You, you can't look at this and go, oh, well, you only spent a hundred and five thousand through June, that's not accurate. It's probably only, what would you guess is in a couple of months? Yeah. So it's really, the billing is lagged.
So that's when we send them to these different facilities, they, they lag and?
Yeah, what happens is our bill comes from the state. So we don't get billed directly from the facilities.
Commissioner.
Talking about eighteen hundred dollars a day, and that just continues on. I mean, we have no say how long that goes on, that can go on for a month, two months?
Well, they say until we get the person out. But I'll be honest with you, I think that we would disagree when they determine a person is medically ready for discharge, and we hear about all the behaviors and the struggle, struggles the individuals are having. We would argue, how on earth are they ready for discharge? And there's no appeal process.
Once you find a place to put them, what does this person cost us then? See, you find a place to place them somewhere.
Yep, it depends. One of the individuals, we placed in a substance use treatment program. So then our share drops to around fifteen to twenty-two percent of those costs, and that's paid for out of our consolidated fund, which we have budgeted.
So who pays the other eighty-five percent?
The state. Those are state funds, yeah. If they get discharged to maybe a foster home, generally for adult foster care, there isn't a county share, there's programs that help pay for that. So it just depends on where they're discharged to.
Brian? Mr. Chair, just a comment. When we were discussing this issue from a financial standpoint too, Rhonda's asking for an additional seventy-five thousand dollars for this, because the state is changing their percentage of care. And we just felt that to increase the county's request and for county's monies to go with this, let's, the state off the hook way too easy. The legislators, I heard at a, at a update, a legislative update, that, you know, they were very happy that they increased the county program aid somewhat that comes out to the county. So, you know, counties, keep your levy down, because we're trying to help you out on the state level. Well, this is not helping us out on the state level. It eats up all of the extra county program aid, and then some for, for your taxpayers to be levied. So we felt to, to put the whole burden on the county out of the chute of six hundred and some is just, makes it too easy. And we have to keep that pressure on for them to not change that percentage and, and make some adjustments. The state should really be helping us out on this, so. That was our logic.
I'm sorry, what are the state director, the other county social services directors? I'm sure you have a statewide agency. Clearly, you must be advocating at the state level that this is not a sustainable option.
Yeah, and I think our association, when we realized we weren't gonna get a lot of traction in changing that percentage, supported the grants, at, at a minimum, supported the revenue to be pulled out of the general fund and make it available to counties to apply for. You know, obviously, if, if the folks are in these state-operated programs and, and they are ready for discharge to least restrictive environments, our staff are working incredible intensely on trying to make that happen. But we need our state to help develop other programs that these folks can go to. So I think that the innovation funds is what they're, mental health innovation funds. The intent is correct. I mean, we wanna try to get these folks stable in, in community settings, on a hospital-based settings. But the way they did it, making it competitive, you know, is, is a struggle. But if we can develop services so that, at the point that they're ready for discharge, we can get them out and get them into community-based services, I mean, that's the goal.
Well, right now, what's the percentage of success with that? I mean, it's gotta be a vicious cycle, right? They say that they're ready to get out, and I'm sure they're jumping right back in.
You know, we have, we have a, a good chunk of these, those costs for the state-operated services involve about, I wanna say eighteen, twenty people at the most. So when you think about that cost, I think that for a good number of folks, it is successful. We can get them stabilized through the civil commitment process and stabilized in community services. But we do, on a routine basis, kinda have that handful of, of folks that are just very, very ill, both substance use as well as mental health. We are starting to see more this last year developmental disability civil commitments that I don't know that we've seen that much in the past. So we're seeing a few, a few more of those.
Going to what, you know, Commissioner Mojo was asking you, the questions, and I, this can't be unique to Clay County.
Oh, goodness, no.
You know, so, you know, the, the question about, you know, people who share your position throughout all the other member counties, it just seems to me that there has to be a more logical approach and a more cost-effective approach that does need to have the state coordinating that. They seem to have a tendency to wanna shut more facilities down and to do what's right and keep some facilities available. And this certainly would be an area where maybe through AMC, we can really get, starting to advocate too for, you know, for all of us to be sending them to some of these places at eighteen hundred dollars a day is just atrocious. That's, that's just, you know.
What is it that they do for them that costs the eighteen hundred dollars?
This is a community behavioral health hospital, so it really is hospital-intense level services. So it's a lot of psychiatry time is huge and very expensive. So a lot of psychiatry, psychology time and stabilization.
But in the case, in a case like that, where they're going into a hospital setting, there's, there's profits in there too.
Well, these are state-operated community behavioral health.
They're state, okay, they are state-operated, okay.
And it's still eighteen hundred dollars a day.
But, but why, why? I, I can't get my hands on why it's eighteen hundred dollars, I just.
Well, they're small, they're sixteen beds, so that's, you know, part of the.
Economy of scale, no economy of scale.
And part of, part of the reason for that, though, is, is so that they can build medical assistance for portions of that cost. If they go above sixteen beds, they lose that ability to build medical assistance. So it's, it's a good model in that way. But when a person, just like if you're in the hospital, you're private insurance, if the doctors are saying, you're medically ready for discharge, your insurance company is gonna have a problem continuing to pay if they're saying you should be discharged. So likewise here, when the psychiatrists say that the individual is stable enough for discharge, medical assistance is gonna not pay, so.
It, it's, you know, the whole, the whole thing here comes down to nobody else will take them.
Right.
And so it's like, nobody else will take them, so we have this license to steal from you, basically, at eighteen hundred. That's what I look at it as. You know, we have, we have kids that go through our, our regional juvenile detention center, and, and they're, they're there for a reason too, and they, but I, I think our, our daily rate for something like that is what, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty dollars a day? And, you know, we think that's high. And, you know, and they're, and they're still getting professional care when they're, and to think eighteen hundred dollars a day is.
I mean, I, I agree, it is atrocious, but the reality is, the level of care that these individuals need warrant medical, a hospital hold. I mean, you go to the hospital one day, we all know what that costs. I mean, so the reality is, these are very ill people. And that's just, it's just, they need to be in there, it's just unfortunate that the way the cost shifted.
Yeah, that hundred percent was really a hit. And I think the frustration I have is, you know, we'll, we'll get a letter, you know, this person doesn't meet hospital level of care three days ago.
And you disagree with it.
And there isn't an appeal process. We've tried, many counties have tried to appeal. It's, but a couple, I think, good things that, I think the, the innovation funds is a, is a good thing that will allow some opportunities for counties to. The other thing is, the work that I think our county is doing on trying to address mental health issues of folks that enter into the correctional system is also important, because some of these folks that we're dealing with with civil commitment come through because they've committed a crime or, or, you know, law enforcement gets called for various reasons. And so the more that we can work with this population early on, get them stable on medications, try to treat community-based and prevent a civil commitment and/or a placement at a CBHH is critical. So those investments, I think, you know, on the front end can hopefully help on this backend that we're dealing with. It's kind of the same thing we talk about with kids. If we can invest in front-end services, hopefully prevent the placement on the, on the.
You're almost looking at a lifetime commitment of these people, aren't you? I mean, if you're saying that they, nobody wants to take them, we're almost looking at a lifetime of costs in us.
Yeah, well, it might be interesting. I haven't looked at this for a while, but to maybe look at our population and look at our history of services with this grouping of, of folks, what our history and length of service has been. I think we see these folks, and Jenny can attest to this as well, we see them get stable and do really well in the community with supports, and then something happens, they go off their meds, they start perhaps using again, if that's the issue, then we're up here and we're, so we have this vicious cycle at times with, with these folks. The other piece, these expenditures really represent four areas. Hold orders for mental health and sex offenders, and then treatment, the, uh, the state-operated services for mental health and sex offenders. So we do have a group of folks that are committed as sex offenders, and we pay a share of that cost as well, and that's included in here as well. Those folks, you know, seem to be under commitment for longer periods of time. And our, you know, we have a twenty percent share for that cost.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just one observation, in doing these cases for thirteen years, the trend I'm seeing, at least here in Clay County, it is a vicious circle, cycle. We see repeat use of the system. Some people only, some people only use this service once, and then we never see them again. But the majority of people, like Rhonda said, we will stabilize, and then, you know, eighteen months to two years later, we'll see them again, and we'll do the same thing. But the trend I see here most recently, unfortunately, is an influx of younger folks into the system. When I started doing these cases, the civil commitment individuals that I dealt with were mostly, I would say forties, fifties, year, fifty-year-olds that were struggling with mental health. I'm seeing young people recently, in their teens, in their early twenties. And I can tell you about, you know, eighty-five to ninety percent of those young people that are struggling with mental illness have some connection to chemical dependency or using. So some sort of drug-induced psychosis, or something that, you know, in my mind, has some connection with using. And so when we talk about all the drug epidemics here recently with the opioids and so forth, I think those have an impact on our civil commitments as well. And people maybe don't make that connection automatically, but when you see these twenty-year-olds coming in, you know, week after week, and, and they're delusional because they've had, they've been on, on heroin, and, and that's triggered some mental illness, and that's a lifelong mental illness now. So just, that's just one observation I have. Unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of young folks and.
I'm glad, I'm glad you bring that up. Jenny, the, just this morning, before I came here, I was, I watched, and there was a, a news, Governor Christie from New Jersey is the chair, national chair on opioid issues. And it's, it's getting so bad there. He's actually requesting that, from the president, that they declare a national state of emergency on, on this issue. And it, and it, I think it does go to a lot to that issue, and, and we really gotta, when they started doing the staggering numbers of people, the percentage of people who have been prescribed opioids when they had, didn't need it, it's, it's just incredible, so. But we can go on and on and on about that, but.
It's a very good point, though, because we are seeing those dual commits. It's mental hea, mental health and CD, and that hadn't necessarily been that strong before, so. So that is, so I put the, the two most challenging at the top. The other one, in detox, so you can kinda see our history with detox, what we budgeted, what we actually spent. This is a contract with Public Health. So the bottom line is, is whatever we put in this budget, could be four hundred thousand, six hundred thousand, at the end of the day, whatever they're short in revenues to expenditures comes out of social service budget. So we, we budget based on what they anticipate for revenues, and that's where that landed from two thousand and seventeen, the four hundred thousand, to four sixty in two thousand and eighteen. So that's that additional sixty thousand, three thirty-two up at the top. County-funded burials, you can see our trend, I just added about five thousand there. We're spending, spent about one fifteen in two thousand and sixteen, one oh six, or one fif, one fifteen in two thousand and fifteen, hundred and six in two thousand and sixteen. I'm trying to kinda stay ahead of those burial costs. We've been adding two percent increase to what we pay for county-funded burials to kinda keep, keep those rates at a reasonable level, and so I just added a little bit there.
Did that rate increase happen in, was, is this the first year of that rate increase that we?
No, the bigger jump came in, let's see, two thousand and fifteen, I believe, was when we started. So, and that would kinda make sense with some of those actual costs, yeah.
What do we look at, more increase in burial costs, or more, we just have more people that we have to take care of?
The number has been fairly, we've been at about forty-eight, forty-eight individuals around there that, that have, have, represent these costs. So that hasn't jumped drastically, but prior to two thousand and fifteen, we hadn't adjusted those rates for quite a long time. And so we met with them, and, you know, Commissioner Wayland was a part of that meeting with a couple funeral directors, and we just did some revisions to that payment structure. So this increase really doesn't represent substantially more county burials. I think we've gone from like forty-four to forty-eight. The last, the last piece on the back page is really just kind of a list of some of our contracts that we have with providers. You can see on the far right, you know, two thousand and seventeen allocation to them, and then what's proposed for two thousand and eighteen, and that percent change. The biggest issue, so mostly two percent. Lakeland did not request increase in the outpatient services, so that's where you'll see those zero percents. The fifty-six point one nine percent for the village, you know, this is something that I'm requesting. However, you may choose not to approve it. It, it actually will be coming this afternoon to the governance board of the collaborative, and I think Commissioner Haney, you're on the governance board. of the collaborative, and I think Commissioner Haney, you're on the governance board. So what we're trying to do there, the increase in that contract is actually seventeen thou- I'm asking for an additional almost eighteen thousand. And what we're trying to do there is, we are struggling with our truancies. Um, we're just seeing a lot of truancy issues across, across the board. Elementary age, it's considered education neglect, but junior high and up, it's considered truancy, and, um, our truancy program is struggling with the volume. We've been working with the schools. And what we're trying to do is, we need some increased funds for that program because we want to expand it to provide services over the summer as well. And so, we've worked with, we're trying to leverage close to eighteen thousand dollars from four entities, one being the collaborative, two being United Way, the third one being more at schools, and then the fourth one being the county, so that we could have a partnership on, um, covering that increase in funds needed to keep the program stable and strong enough to serve the number of kids we're, we're requesting. So, that is that increase. Today, the, this afternoon, that request is going to the collaborative. And this would all depend on all four partners kind of agreeing to put, um, to provide these funds to move it work. Um, but these kids come into social services, they come into our placement system as well. So it's, again, it's another effort to try to address the issues these kids are having so that we can prevent that on placements. So that's the biggest, um, chunk of, of that increase. And then the last thing that is not on my list is, um, as I indicated before, we do pay the county attorney's office for the work that they do in our social service areas. Well, actually, all of our areas, but this increase is mostly related to social services. And that did increase twenty-three thousand. So I, I have failed to put that on the list. But, um, we obviously need their work. And as our caseloads increase, then so does theirs.
Rhonda, was there just a lot, and it's going into effect where, uh, ten-year-olds have to be provided lawyers, you know, and then our imposter placement?
Yes, yes.
Is that going to have any impact on, uh, on your budget, or is that all, uh?
Yeah, I do not believe it will have an impact on our budget.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I can speak to that. The, the legislation that was passed was not a change, um, to the requirement for an attorney. The ten-year-olds and above have always had to have an attorney, or had the right to have an attorney. Uh, what, what the change is, is that they have to be told that they have a right to an attorney. And so, we don't expect that that will, yeah, we kind of rolled our eyes as well, in the sense that, well, why wouldn't you tell them? That's our practice here. We tell them right away, you have a right to an attorney. Apparently, some counties were not telling them that they had the right to an attorney, and as a child, how would you know, uh, that you have a person that can speak for you? So, you shouldn't see any additional dollars, because that has been the law and will continue to be the law.
There are a few in looking at our revenues. Revenues are always laying behind. So, I think in the next month or so, we'll see our second quarter revenues, and generally, at that point, Susan and I take a look at the budget to see if there's anything that, um, it would, we could make some adjustments on, hopefully up versus down. Um, our revenues, some of our revenues are, well, many of our revenues are earned revenues, so it depends on caseload, it depends on rates, and so, um, but we'll be looking at that again as well to see if that could provide any changes to the budget.
All right. I think, uh, we're past our time this morning on this. Rhonda, I know your, your budget is, uh, is a very large one, and we'll have you back, I'm sure, a couple times between now and September to cover things. Thank you for your update this morning.
You're welcome. Do you want?
Just mention that, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, do you have something else?
Well, we can, um, the mental health, um, we wanted to, the committee really wanted to get something in front of you
Okay.
On the mental health jail side of things. Um, so we had put this, um, together, and the rest of the members of the committee can speak to it as well, but, um, this is, so as you can see, uh, this is, uh, for twenty eighteen, it's proposed starting in July through, so it's half a year, and then we put the full year on there. Um, some of the recommendations were for a full-time mental health professional, a full-time mental health practitioner, and a full-time reintegration advanced planning coordinator. The, the RAP person, the reintegration advanced planning, Julie is addressing in her budget process, but the other pieces, and then we talked about, um, CIT, Critical Incident Training, for first responders and jail staff. So that is what's included in this, um, budget. So, the three revenues, uh, the ten thousand dollars is actually revenue that we are already giving to Lakeland Mental Health Center for services at the jail.
Okay.
So, levied in social service budget, we can, we could take that out and put it here, so it wouldn't be any new dollars. Um, the state grant mental health crisis response services, thirty thousand, uh, we are, is also revenue, well, for twenty seventeen that we already have, we're going to be building it in, into a grant request for twenty eighteen. We're pretty optimistic that we will have that revenue to pay for the CIT training. Okay? The thirty-seven five hundred, um, we were successful in getting Lakeland Mental Health Center to, um, to support our project with seventy-five thousand dollars, and so we divided that between the two years to help for, to help pay for the professional and practitioner time at the jail. So that's revenue there. And then the six thousand five hundred is also revenue that we already have been using to support the services at the jail, that we will divert from our adult mental health initiative into this project. So that's also not new money. And then you have the expenditures there. The thirty thousand for the CIT training, which is a wash with the grant, and then the mental health professional services for half a year at sixty-four thousand one seventy, and the practitioner services for half a year at forty-six thousand sixty-three. So, for twenty eighteen, the, the deficit we would have would be that fifty-six thousand two thirty-three.
So are these, are you, uh, proposing that it be, uh, they become, um, hundred percent employed by the county, then? Is that?
No, this is contract.
What is contract?
Yep, yep. So the, um, of course, the training is contracted through the CIT Association of Minnesota. The professional and the practitioner is a, is, in this scenario, contract with Lakeland.
Okay, and, and?
Full-time contract.
Full-time, so it'd be, uh, full-time meaning they're there, uh, during normal business hours? Is that what that means, or how, or does that work?
I think that is all yet to be kind of vetted out.
Okay.
And what they're looking at is, for a full-time position, um, a part-time and a part-time, so we have good coverage for professional and a part-time and a part-time for practitioner. And then we will work out kind of service delivery, individual group.
This is about a third less than it would have been with the other contract.
Yes.
Okay.
Dollar-wise.
Well, it's, uh...
I want to thank, you know, both Commissioner Gross and I are on the committee, and Gina's on the committee, and Brian and Jenny have sat in too. And I think it, we've really tried to be creative, to, one, address the needs, as we all saw in your budget earlier, the, the mental health piece, but to, to be creative in how we address the mental health needs of, of the jail population, um, and, and do it without a huge new budget request. And so, so hopefully, you know, we do have a couple more goals that we'd like to kind of see down the line, but these were the ones that were the most important, that were identified. And I think getting the service that we're going to get with the, the four individuals, if it is, um, you know, for that dollar amount, I think is really a good deal.
Well, for us to, for us to, uh, tout what we want to do here with our new facility, we, this is a critical component. I'm glad you're all working on it. I, it sounds like it's a, a really good start to a good plan.
I think we're gonna talk, if we're gonna say it's gonna be called a correctional facility, we have to do this. We're gonna call it a jail, we don't need this. You know, but if we're gonna call it a correctional facility, we need this.
Very good. It's a good start. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's take a three-minute break here, and then we'll, I would hate to keep you waiting, but we'll, three minutes, we'll be back.
Too much?
We convene here, um, we have with us this morning, uh, Adam, and we have an update on the Cass-Clay Food Commission. And Gina's here, you wanna?
Yeah, we all joined in here.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, a few years ago, we came here talking about Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative, and we're here today to give an update on where we've been. Um, and so with that, um, two of our key people with the Food, uh, Cass-Clay Food Systems Commission, um, Anna Mollberg from MetroCog, and Megan Miradell, who is the coordinator of that, are gonna give this update.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you again for giving, giving us some time here today. Um, what we'd like to take a couple moments talking about first is the history of the Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative, and the Cass-Clay Food Commission, and then Megan is gonna talk about the restructure to the Cass-Clay Food Partners and its future direction. So, um, Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative was formed in two thousand and ten, probably in response to the National Good Food Movement, um, which advocates for increasing support and capacity of the local food system, as well as, um, access to fresh, local and healthy food. Um, this is a joint effort between, uh, Public Health and Extension Offices in Cass and Clay Counties. Uh, in two thousand and thirteen, the initiative, uh, partnered with MetroCog to develop the Metropolitan Food Systems Plan. Uh, this was completed in two thousand and thirteen, um, and pride, provided a baseline assessment to better understand the local food system, um, as well as a framework to move forward on some of these issues. So, last time we were here was about two and a half years ago. Uh, at the time, we were looking to form the Cass-Clay Food Commission. Uh, it's formed, um, through a joint power agreement between the city of Fargo and Clay County, and its purpose, um, has been to advise policymakers, elected officials, and city and county planning officials, uh, ways to increase access to safe, nutritious, and affordable food in the area. Cass-Clay Food Commission is made up of six, uh, elected officials, including Jenny Mojo from the Clay County Commission. Uh, we also have five, uh, at-large members that represent, uh, various aspects of the food systems. Um, we have two, um, two, uh, people with farming expertise, Caleb Pirdmore and John Everett. Uh, we have one, one person that's been involved in the community garden, gardening efforts in the area, Mindy Grant. And then we have two, um, two people that work in culinary services, uh, for West Fargo, um, Area Public Schools, and Concordia College, Dana Reith, and Chris Olson. Uh, ex-official memberships to the commission is, um, granted to, um, County, uh, Public Health in Cass and Clay Counties, MetroCog, and then also the Steering Committee, uh, which provides some of the planning and technical activities for the commission. Um, Cass-Clay Food Commission, uh, progress up to date, we've been meeting for over two years now. Um, in that time, the commission's focused mostly on urban agriculture. This was identified as a priority issue in the Food Systems Plan by the Steering Committee and by the commission itself. Uh, we also did a online community survey in June twenty fifteen, uh, looking at prioritizing some of the urban egg issues. Uh, with that, community gardens was identified as the most important, um, issue in the FM area. So, in that time, uh, we've developed, uh, ten, uh, blueprints, uh, looking at different aspects of urban agriculture. These blueprints provide policy guidance and education to city and county officials, uh, planning departments, and other interested parties, should a city or county decide to move forward on a particular urban agriculture issue. Um, of these blueprints, nine have been approved. Uh, one is pending and looking to be approved by the commission in September. And with that, I'll hand it over to Megan to talk about the restructure.
All right. Uh, good morning. Um, so as Adam mentioned, this initiative formed in two thousand and ten. In two thousand and fifteen, we formed the Cass-Clay Food Commission. And in the last few years, we've recognized that there's been a lot of changes in our community system, um, community food system. And additionally, um, looking at some of the work that's happened through the initiative, um, the Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative really isn't an initiative anymore. There's been a lot of actions, blueprints have been created, we have a commission. And so it was recognized that we need to think about a restructure in order to better, um, convey to the community what we're trying to do, and create a pathway, um, for citizens and the community to be involved in this work. Um, so that's what we're here to talk about today, is our shift from the initiative, um, to forming the Cass-Clay Food Partners. Um, some of the goals of this restructure are recognizing and embracing that there's been a strong change in our community food system. Uh, there's more farmers' markets, community gardens, um, and just a lot more active interest in local food production, and interest in people knowing where their food comes from and eating a healthy, um, diet. Um, there's a lot of community interest right now in a lot of this work, and a lot of people asking for ways to be involved, and we want to create a pathway, um, for citizens to be involved in this work. And then also to facilitate connections between policymakers and constituents in order to effectively implement our mission. Um, so, we are effectively now called the Cass-Clay Food Partners, and this is the logo that we have developed. Um, so, all future, uh, work and communication on behalf of this effort will come through the Cass-Clay Food Partners. And within the partners, we have three distinct entities that are, um, distinct but also very connected in the work. Um, the Cass-Clay Food Commission, which Adam already talked about, which is our elected officials, the Cass-Clay Food Partners Steering Committee, which is representatives from Public Health Extension and some other entities that are kind of the, um, guiding and organizing force behind this work, and the Cass-Clay Food Action Network, which is a newly-formed, um, division of this work, which I'll talk a little bit more about. Um, but overwhelmingly, what we're trying to do with the Cass-Clay Food Partners is building a strong, healthy, and vibrant food system. Our mission is to improve all levels of our community's food system, to assure that residents have access to safe, nutritious, affordable, and culturally based foods. And then that is the vision of this work, is that all members of our community have access to these basic needs. Uh, these are the values that are stated behind the Cass-Clay Food Partners, an inclusive, integrated, and equitable food system, the belief that our food system needs to be economically and ecologically resilient, uh, that we're a food system where all cultures are respected, that this is a food system that supports and enhances quality of life for all citizens, and that where this is a food system that fosters, fosters successful entrepreneurship and sustainable innovation. Uh, so how we are approaching the accomplishment of these goals and values is that we are encouraging shared leadership, recognizing that this work cannot be done in a silo or owned by one entity, that a food system is diverse, and that all stakeholders need to be involved and active in this work, um, that we foster teamwork and shared responsibility, and that this needs to be done at a systemic level, that nothing happens in isolation, and that we need to think about, um, how this work can be done to, um, meet the needs of our community. So now I'm just gonna briefly talk through, um, what the roles and individuals are in each one of these aspects of the Cass-Clay Food Partners. Um, the first being the Cass-Clay Food Partners Steering Committee. Um, this is an advisory committee comprised of key government organizations, as well as food system experts, working to provide direction and organization and management for the partners. Um, so it includes representatives from Public Health and Extension in both Cass and Clay Counties, MetroCog, an area planner, um, a project coordinator, um, which is myself at this time, a blueprint writer who has been creating, um, those documents which, um, Adam discussed, and then providing an opportunity for five food systems experts to be involved in this work. Um, so currently, Abby Gold, Deb Haugen, and Nikki Johnson are those representatives, um, and we're currently seeking two additional people to serve on this steering committee, um, to again be the organizing and management focus of this work. And, um, the bolded members of the Cass-Clay Food Partners Steering Committee are the core sustaining members, that those organizations or entities, um, will always appoint one person to serve as a steering committee member. Um, I won't revisit this, but again, the Cass-Clay Food Commission will stay, um, as Adam has previously discussed, and continue to focus on the policy approaches to improving our local food system. And then the newest, um, addition to the Cass-Clay Food Partners, and one we're really excited about, is the Cass-Clay Food Action Network. And so, in the two-plus years that the Cass-Clay Food Commission has been, um, meeting and discussing these community issues, there's been a lot of interest in individuals wanting to be involved in conversations, knowing how to get involved in community gardens, wanting to know more information about farmers' markets, wanting to discuss a broad variety of issues in our community food system. And so what we're really hoping to do with the Cass-Clay Food Action Network is to create a meeting place and a platform to engage the broader interests of this community and this work. Uh, so, the Cass-Clay Food Commission meets bimonthly, um, January- So, the Cass-Clay Food Commission meets bimonthly, January, March, May. And the goal of the Cass-Clay Food Action Network is to meet on the off months and to create a place that is accessible to the community to come and be involved in these conversations. The Cass-Clay Food Commission meets at 10:30 on Wednesday mornings. It isn't as conducive for all people to be in part of those conversations. So we're talking about this being an early morning meeting, something that's exciting, that is capitalizing on the energy that we have in our local food community right now and just bringing more people into the conversation. So hopefully finding more ways for people to volunteer and to be active and engaged in this work. And so moving forward, we're in the process right now of presenting this update to all the jurisdictions. We were at the City of Fargo last night and we're here today. We'll continue to have meetings throughout this month. And then we'll finally present this final restructure plan to the Cass-Clay Food Commission on September 12th. We'll also be organizing the first Cass-Clay Food Action Network meeting in November of this year. We're gonna be doing that in coordination with the Minnesota Food Charter and Action Network, which when we presented to you a couple of years ago, we also talked about the synergy between the work of the Minnesota Food Charter and our local work with the Cass-Clay Food Commission. But we'll be doing those two events together to highlight how our work locally is connecting with some of the goals that are laid out in the Minnesota Food Charter at the statewide level. And then with regards to our direction for future blueprints, we've been heavily focused on urban agriculture with the Cass-Clay Food Commission for the last couple of years. We're still going to continue to support that work, but as we're shifting directions with new blueprints and new conversations in the commission, we'll be focusing on issues of food access, looking at opportunities for people to access healthy, local, affordable, and safe food in our community. So with that, we are happy to answer any questions you have and again, thank you for your time this morning.
Any questions?
I'll just comment briefly because I've been a part of that. I do think that it's been a worthwhile get-together of the different jurisdictions, specifically to clarify any questions that may come up during the planning and zoning ordinance conversation. And I, I think that we've relayed kind of some of the conversations that have happened to our, our planning commission. And while not all of the blueprints apply to the county, some of them are more specifically aimed at cities. You know, I think it's been a worthwhile conversation to at least have the concerns of all the different jurisdictions.
I, I wanna throw a suggestion out to you that, and it may sound kinda strange coming from a person wearing the hat of being on a solid waste advisory committee, but as Grant knows and Jim's been on this committee before, recently, I believe it was Concordia College did a study on food waste and the significance of it. And you know, so when we, when we're trying to have a full discussion about this, it was just amazing how many tons of food were just thrown out. And, and so, you know, I think we've had people that work with the Green Corps that have done some work on this and, and it might be worthwhile to bring somebody from that end in to, you know, discuss that component of it too.
Stephanie Reynolds was on the board for a while and she did talk about composting.
It was just staggering, they, what we learned, just, I think the students at Concordia were shocked when they heard just how much was just being wasted, just through their, you know, on-campus food service.
Absolutely. And Chris Olson is the current culinary manager at Concordia College, so he's brought to light some of that work that Concordia has done. And I think I participated with Commissioner Haney at the waste sort that happened at the Clay County. So yeah, there's, there's a lot of good conversation around the issue of food waste right now. From the Cass-Clay Food Partners perspective, one thing that we're gonna be working on in the next year is gleaning efforts and how to make sure that foods that are being grown in our community, that all that food gets harvested and makes it way, its way to people in need, whether that be charitable feeding or other opportunities to get that food utilized.
Well, the last year or two, as I walk and I walk in Northmore, I see a lot of this growing, you know, I'm assuming they're, they're involved with this, where they're having their growing gardens and they share and so it's...
As much as we wanna encourage people to grow, we wanna make sure all the food gets utilized as well, so it needs to be a full circle.
Right, very good. All right. Thank you.
And our, one of our blueprints is composting. And, but did we have, did we do an industrial one, two as well?
So we've created blueprints related to backyard composting as well as municipal composting as well, and looking at how different jurisdictions have managed collection of organic waste.
Yeah, and part of that organic waste too is, you know, is we're learning right now, even in our, as the City of Morehead and the City of Fargo have gone to the single sort, what we're finding is a lot of the, a lot of those blue bins have been contaminated because of organic waste that, so there, there still is that education process that needs to be done there, but...
Sure, yeah. I think the, we don't have any copies of the blueprints here, do we?
They are all available on the website.
On the website. And they're a nice document. One of the examples of how we can use those as we go farther too is in planning and with the groups that are meeting on the various issues. For example, when Fargo was talking about the chickens, we had a blueprint that became, came very handy in that process because it had, had researched, you know, all kinds of things in relationship to what chickens in the backyard might eat. And that was very useful for people as they're developing policies. So, we're hoping that these become useful for all jurisdictions.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Dave.
Put Dan in the middle.
Right, you're first though, you wanna advertise for County 57 Bridge Replacement?
Yep, right on.
Thank you.
Page forty-seven is where the...
Well, before we get into the budget though, I want it, the item number eight, request for approval to advertise for County Route 57?
Correct. This was a project that's been on the shelf for about a year. We did finally get bridge bond funds for it. Some funding came through, we got our letter, we put together our ad and a little schedule on that one. This is a project that's just kind of southeast of Saban a little bit on a rural gravel road. Conditions are such, we need to get rid of this, this bridge sooner than later. So, it does meet all the criteria according to the state bridge inventory system, sufficiency ratings and things. Looking at a bid letting on September 5th at nine o'clock. It would be closed over the, the winter season. We did talk to some of the local growers in the area, as far as like school bus routes and things like that, and it's not gonna be a major impact, there's other roads to go around it. We think it's gonna get a little better price if we do let it rather than waiting till next spring, so. Like I said, we talked to several of the different beet farmers and other farmers in the area and it didn't sound like it'd be a huge inconvenience to shut it down. Probably looking at a closing date mid-October, so if there is any sugarbeets that need to go across, they'll at least get a couple weeks usage on it before we shut it down, so.
I also have a question, why, why it wouldn't be later?
Excuse me?
Well, the last couple, I mean, we all know that sugar beet harvest often goes to the end of October. I mean, we'd get really lucky, we're done by the twentieth of October, but...
We could shut it down potentially at the end of September, so we thought we'd find some middle ground. We can wait, I guess. Do we want, we wanna get some work done this fall yet? We could, like I said, there's not a lot of beets down in that area. And I guess I talked to Buttonoff and I talked to Jim Baker and both of them didn't think it'd be a major problem. There's township roads around it and...
All right, so what's the board's wishes? We have a request, request to approve the advertising for the bridge replacement.
What was the advertisement?
Second. You have an motion in the second for the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same motion carried, we'll move on to the, your budget presentation, when you said what page?
Oh, sorry, page forty-seven, Mr. Chair.
Forty-seven?
Yep.
All right, okay.
All right, the highway department budget is comprised of four main areas. And I think I tried to bullet point out a little bit for you, as I have in the past. I guess we've got, on page one, we've got maintenance, that's ten dash three-ten. Page two is construction, ten dash three-twenty. Page three is administration, ten dash three-thirty. And page four is equipment, maintenance, and shop, which is ten dash three-forty. And then there is some other unallocated items on page five. The only one I really noted there to take a look at is we did include fifty thousand dollars that we did kinda discuss briefly at our highway committee, but that would be our repayments plan for the highway landfill shop that would come out of highway funds and go into solid waste, being that they've confronted the project for the reconstruction of that building. So we've got a five-year repayment schedule on that. There was a down payment that we used. We worked through the auditor treasurer a little bit as far as the down payment from county highway reserves, as a, I think there's four hundred thousand dollar down payment, is that right Laurie? And then we've got a five-year, fifty thousand dollars per year repayment plan for it that would be roughly our sixty percent share of the building. Also started on page one, I guess, on the maintenance.
That's our page forty-seven.
Is that your page forty-seven?
Yes.
Yep.
So, most of the items typically are, are history. Ann and I sit down, we go through this. We kinda take a look at trends on where things are going. It's kinda hard to predict when things are gonna fall apart and this and that, so if as long as the trend stays somewhat steady, for the most part, the budgeting process isn't too difficult. But for the, the one thing, I guess salaries actually maintain the two percent kind of cost of living. We didn't have a lot of, in this area, didn't have a lot of people retiring, so that's sometimes you see salaries go down a little bit. And we, we did see that in some of the other areas here, but...
But that one nine, that one-six-four, that's step, isn't it?
Correct. So for the most part, we kept everything pretty flat on the maintenance area. The, one of the big items to take a look at is road materials. I think that is, I don't know, there are any here. Yeah, ten-three-ten, six-five-oh-two. Last year, we budgeted eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars for road materials. That's for gravel, that's for asphalt, spray patching material, and all the things that we utilize to remove and replace and fix our roads. We kept that one flat as we have for the last couple of years. In fact, in twenty sixteen, we actually had it at eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, so we have lowered that one twenty-five thousand over the last couple of years. The other real big item is roadway maintenance costs, which is essentially the labor line item for our repairs. We've kept that one flat. That one also was two hundred and sixty thousand in twenty sixteen, so we've lowered that one la, or this current year, we lowered it and we just kinda kept it flat. Culverts, we've kept those the same. Traffic controls, we bumped that one up a little bit for twenty seventeen, but that was for the replacement of the street and avenue signs that we're currently on a... Is that a three-year replacement program, Eric? I think we've got it through, so this is year one, we've got two more years at that level, and then the traffic signs will probably go back down to that thirty-five thousand dollar range. We did also add a little bit of money on the intergovernmental payments, and that was for the turnback project that worked with the City of Morehead on Twelfth Avenue. I think we've got about a fifty-eight thousand dollar annual payment that would pay for the construction costs on that half-mile of roadway that they're reconstructing right now. We, we worked through our highway committee on that and we recommended a high, a county design segment through there, and the cost on that would be roughly half a million dollars. I think they spent well in excess of two million dollars on that entire project, which would be a roadway that would meet their needs to include storm sewer, bike paths, and that sort of thing. So, they were in agreement with that, and we do have a current MOU in place for all that, but we did need to put that in the twenty eighteen budget, which would be, I think we've got a ten-year replacement on that one, does that sound right?
Yep.
So we've got fifty-eight thousand dollars included in there for the next ten years, that's very, kind of our plan.
Okay. Is that the portion east of Horizon School?
Correct, yep.
Yep. Any questions?
But that, that'll, the county is gonna benefit from that.
Absolutely.
Big time.
Already. If you drive through that, that's really gonna connect those two.
Exactly. There's gonna be more development in that area. In addition, we are turning back the entire mile.
Huge group back in.
To City of Morehead.
We'll see, we'll definitely see the revenue benefits from that as well, so. All right, page two?
Page two is ten dash three-twenty, that's our construction.
Say, Dave, before you go to the, you know, I'm just wondering why, on the road materials, if this is through June, we're only showing a hundred and five thousand, is there that much lag in, in?
Yeah, we are actually in the pro, I don't, I don't know if all of our gravel is in there or not. And he is also starting to do some paving right now, so he's gonna be spending some higher dollars here towards the second half of the summer season, so.
Okay. So the, the vast majority of that, he entered in sixty then, is during construction season?
Correct.
I had a question too on the, the weed and brush control. This is that type of season and you've only used a fifth of that budget.
We typically do burn most of that down. I don't, I don't know why the year-to-dates don't seem like they're right, but we definitely, usually we're a little conservative though. I worked with Kevin from SoL Modern on that, and he knows exactly what our budget is and we go through it. We leave a little bit of money at this time for, in the fall, as things start showing up, so we can, we, they hire LMM from Uland up there to grow the spring, so...
I had asked, I talked to him a little bit about that when he was here last week, but, and you know this, but the thistle is awful right now. And now it's, I mean, all of it's out to seed now, so...
Sure, it's almost too late.
You know, I'd like to see us, if we have it budgeted, I'd like to see us use as much of it as possible.
Good. I'll share that with our, for our current plans.
I think Commissioner Moser last week raised an issue too outside of this meeting, I think, but Solid Waste also has some funds that they use at the landfill for this, and I think there, there was suggested that there be a, a three-way communication between you and Solid Waste and then with Kevin at the...
Well, because if they're, it's the same thing that happened last year with new dollars, if there's a county match and, you know, we have these three different departments or three different areas that need to do something on weeds, if we could get creative and collaborating to get the state match.
You might be able to get additional dollars, but... Okay, page two, Dave.
All right, so, page two is ten dash three-twenty, that's our construction items. This page is very dependent on our five-year construction plan, so if it does spike up and down depending on if we've got real big projects or if we're just doing some overlays and things like that. This current budget for twenty eighteen, we do have a big project in City of Glendon, so we are gonna see some municipal state aid expenditures. So we've got the revenue showing on the top part and the revenues and expenditures on the bottom. I think we got about three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars or so showing up from municipal state aid, so we're gonna use a lot of that. The salaries part is actually down a little bit. We had a, one long-term employee retire and we hired a newer, younger staff, so that's down a little bit. Our consulting budget is probably the biggest one that did spike up this year. Our current budget for consulting, which is ten-three-twenty-six-two-seven-four, for twenty seventeen is forty thousand. We did spike that up to a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So what we've got in there is we've got fees for a bridge design from our bridge designers, we don't do that. We've got a lot of paving, so we've got testing from MnDOT, we've got some bridge removal, asbestos and contaminated materials tests that we have to do. We've got some soils reports that we need done, hydraulic analysis. And then the biggest thing is, and I'm gonna probably have our consultant come first to Highway Tracking Committee and then possibly to the County Board, but we're looking at doing a pretty extensive pavement management project for twenty eighteen. So every year, the county gets pavement data from MnDOT, and what the project would be is it would be to take all that data, put it together, analyze our roadways, and just give a really good report on where we are today, where we're lacking, and what it would cost to bring things up to like a considerable, sustainable level. You wanna elaborate on that, on that at all, Eric, or?
No, I, I mean, I think that's basically it, you know, trying to manage our pavements the best we can and use the data that we have.
It's something that I've been thinking about for a while. Outer Tail County did this to a little bigger level than we're looking at doing. They, they hired the same firm, it's SRF and Braun, they kinda tag-team this. One is more driven by the data and one's more driven on putting together the report format. Outer Tail County has been giving demonstrations and it's just, it's amazing what they put together in the report. And I asked if we could get a proposal for something similar, but not quite to the platinum level that Outer Tail County did. And they kinda tailored us a project looking at about a sixty thousand dollar price tag on it, but we're utilizing a lot of the data that we already have and are given, that we don't, just don't quite have the time or expertise to put together in the format that I'd like to present to you. So I think we're really excited about it. Like I said, I think in September, we're gonna bring the consultants to the Highway Tracking Committee. We were gonna do that today, but we're kinda running out of time, so we're gonna kick it down to September, and then maybe we should do the same thing to the board, have them give a little demonstration so they can see, maybe in later... And then maybe we should do the same thing to the board, have them give a little demonstration so they can see maybe in later in September, October. See what the outcome's going to be. I'm pretty excited to move forward on this. As far as the construction, I think that's really about it. Not, not a lot changed up or down, like I said. Most of the bigger numbers are, are using our state gas tax dollars and then expending them down below on expenditures. So it's kind of driven on a five-year plan.
Hey Dave, Mr. Chair. Wasn't this where you, we increased to four fifty for the construction amount?
No, it stayed at four.
That is correct, Brian. We did also propose an increase to ten three twenty sixty-six thirty-one, new construction.
But it's not in here right now. The proposal is still four.
It's still four hundred?
I resist four.
We changed it after, after that was printed for the board, we had our meeting. And so it's changed on mine for my copy that I have.
So that is one proposal, I guess it's not on your form as. We just have so many projects on the county system that we're, we're lacking. And I, I thought maybe it'd be a good time to take a look at that. My budget is a little on the flatter side compared to some years. And we would definitely see the benefits to having a little more funding to make repairs on our county roads. This is about the only fund we can utilize for county road repair projects. If there's bridge replacements on county roads, this is the matching fund that would pay for those unallocated bridge expenses, so.
Mr. Chair and Dave, wasn't it in highway tracking that we moved it up to four fifty on that scale for, for twenty eighteen? Remember that was, we did a gradual?
Well, I think it was a discussion, but I don't know that it was. We'd have to take a look at that height, the, the funding on the five-year plan.
Yeah, that, that's where our discussion went. When we, when we met with Lori and I met with Dave the other day was the fact that we thought it had gone there on the, on the, on the highway tracking. But we can check that out, so.
I think what we kind of talked about is in twenty fifteen, we did approve a fifty thousand dollar increase in funds that never got allocated and I missed that on.
Well, maybe that's what it was.
And then we were looking at possibly in the near future, like maybe twenty eighteen or so, trying to go another fifty thousand. So what ended up having is we didn't actually get the fifty thousand in there until the seventeen budget. So we're kind of just playing catch-up a little bit, I think.
That's what it was. All right, page three or are pages forty-nine?
Administration. It looks like your salaries have just had the general hike increase, nothing up or down there. So things are real flat on this one as well. The only major, I guess, increase I think is in, where is that? No, it's our, our maintenance softwares.
Sixty-two seventy-one?
Yeah. It would be other professional services, ten three twenty sixty-two seventy-one. We did have a fairly significant software maintenance increase. Now, we use RT Vision for E-Time Card. We use it for the one office construction management software as well as all of our online permitting. So they came to all their different customers and said that there's been requests for a significant increase to their software. And we were on the hook for about sixty thousand dollars, so it's about twelve thousand a year for five years. And one of the, one of the increases was the E-Time Card, which is used countywide. And imagine that increases countywide, it's not just highway department for the Time Card portion. Or even though our, the highway department share of the E-Time Card is quite a bit different.
Yeah, I think it's just the road and bridge ones.
Yeah, it's way more.
Yours is totally separate from ours.
Yeah, it's, it's fifty times more complicated just because we've got all the equipment, every single roadway in the county and every single function that each employee could do, whether it's pulling weeds, mowing grass. There's probably two hundred different.
It accommodates the cost of county software as well as the county payroll software.
So that line item did jump up from thirteen thousand up to nineteen thousand five hundred and that's the reason for that. Oh yeah, the other thing is we do have one new request for my entire budget and that is down on the equipment over five hundred. Every five years, we would, we do propose to replace our copy machine and I've got fifty-five hundred dollars in there. I've been, I've been meeting with some of the vendors and then last week, Brian and Lori and I met. And we are going to utilize the assistance of the IT department to help us make that replacement. But I'm anticipating it to be around a fifty-five hundred dollar range. That's pretty much all I have for the administration.
I've got a question for you on the copy machine, does that include the ink that you go through?
The ink kind of comes through a maintenance. Most of the copy, you know, the, the maintenance contract, it covers your ink, so I don't, I don't believe it would.
Okay, just like at the shop, we have a, a copy machine that we do everything on. That include, the contract for the lease on that includes the ink maintenance and all that. And it's about a hundred bucks a month, something like that.
Okay, and I had, you know, that is one thing we did talk about, whether it would be best to do a purchase with a contract or do like maybe a five-year, sixty-month lease on that. I think we're still kind of debating on what's the best option. And I think what would be best is maybe to, one more time, run that through our auditing office just to see if they agree. When I took a look at the, at the cost for the lease, it looked like it was about eighty-eight hundred dollars for a sixty-month lease at the rates versus fifty-five hundred or so to purchase. So I guess I'd have to weigh out the cost on the, I think we pay somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred dollars a quarter for the, for the maintenance on the machine plus the toner. Somewhere's in there, but I'll take a look at that and see if there could be some savings there.
All right, page four.
Page four is highway equipment, maintenance and shop. Their salaries are down as well as both the staff that we have in the shop, our new employees and the other guys that were there before had been there for twenty-plus years. So we are seeing a little reduction in the salaries. We did redistribute some funds this year. We're starting to notice the, the two guys in the shop now are, are, are doing more repairs in-house rather than, than bringing them out to different repair shops and things. So what we'd like to do is lower our equipment repair and maintenance line item, six three oh two. It was at two hundred and ten thousand, we'd like to lower that by fifteen thousand and then put more money in the small tools. And then the equipment over five hundred. And there was one more, the building repair and maintenance. We'd like to basically make that budget neutral, but redistribute fifteen thousand dollars so that our guys have a little more money to work with. They can make the repairs, they can buy the tools that they need to make the repairs, so. That's one thing that we did. We did take a look at fuel as well. And Kevin, you brought up a point earlier on about that roadway maintenance. If that fund is a little higher than we're spending down, we may take a look at that for future years. When things were going real bad, several years ago, we had lots of asphalt that was going apart and we were doing a lot more paving. We would, we would spend more on that. So we haven't lowered that roadway maintenance one down. But like I said, with the fuel one here, we were at four hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget for twenty sixteen. We did lower that one by about fifty thousand dollars for twenty seventeen. We're down to three seventy and we did lower it again by another sixty thousand for twenty eighteen.
And Mr. Chair, that was lowered when we met the other day too, so it really offset that fifty. It's not reflected in, in what the documents you have, so it offsets that fifty thousand.
So you probably have three seventy, I think on your sheet.
And it's changed to three twen, or three?
Three ten.
Three ten?
We proposed to lower that down and we're seeing significant savings still in fuel. We've been having good winter seasons where we're not spending as much money on fuel in the wintertime. And then the price of diesel still about two fifty-five a gallon, so.
So when you, when you do that, the other, the other part of that equation is that the contract with townships, their, their, the revenue we're going to get from them is reduced too because the, the, obviously they're, they're benefiting by some of this less, less costly miles. Are, have we incorporated the loss in revenue on the top here?
Remember that's the five-year average, so the, the spikes are a little bit less. But I think the answer to your question is yes, we definitely, we're still getting probably a higher rate right now because of bad years, three, four years ago, right? So it could go the other way though, eventually we, we if.
But didn't they see a reduction in their?
They did, you have twenty-five bucks a month.
So, so that's going to, would mean a reduction in the revenue.
And if we were using actual costs on a one-year basis, it would have went down probably quite a bit.
Well, and the five-year, I think is smart.
So they still, we still have some like eleven, twelve, thirteen in those years where things were a little bit higher than they were. These last couple of years have been phenomenal. We've had a really, really good winter, probably spending near the amount of fuel that we have in the past, so. But you're correct, we, we are seeing a, a little bit reduction in revenues coming from them. But it's still higher than our expensive expenses on a one-year basis based on five-year average.
And Dave, going back just on each of these pages, yours, there's salaries involved with every one. And I noticed in some of them, we have, we show an increase. All of them, we've taken into consideration that there's potential steps, right, on, on every page?
Yes.
But, but then, but then the issue becomes replacement on some, we've replaced just because of the way the new ones fall on the, on the scale. That's where we actually, why we see in some areas where it's a negative number, right?
Yes, I think there was two, two of the four, I think, had newer staffs who are seeing reduction in salaries. And then the last item for construction, I guess, is just the.
Say, say, Mr. Chair, you asked a question about the townships. If you'll notice on page forty-seven up at top under the township and cities, that they did budget twenty-two thousand dollars less for twenty eighteen for revenues from townships because of that flowing scale. So that is taken into account, the, the lower revenue of twenty-two thousand dollars for twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Just the last item note, we did, in the past, we have increased based on how we're sitting with internal service fund for repair of equipment or replacement of equipment. You see this year, we only increased it ten thousand dollars, so it's kind of a little easier if we don't have to make big jumps. So hopefully eventually we'll kind of get back on track with our, how we're sitting with internal service funds. Something that we talked about quite a bit at highway committee. We want to have that fund able to replace what we need. But one thing that we have talked about is we don't need enough funds in there to replace everything all at once. You know, that would never happen. So I think we're sitting pretty good. We're not completely funded on, on everything that we have, but maybe we don't need to be either.
We're over a million dollars, sure, closer to it.
If I can ask on the sale of the two buildings that we dealt with, with highway. Originally that was to reduce the cost of the construction of the new shop.
Yep.
Is that still how that played out? Because I noticed, you know, we're paying back solid waste. Where, did those dollars go towards the buying down of?
Well, we haven't received them, well, we just received one of the dollars yet, but they haven't gone yet. We just, we made a trunk last year, we paid off, and then it's fifty thousand dollars per year for five years.
Yeah, so the, so the revenues that we still have coming in on the sale of those properties, they haven't been budgeted to offset anything at this point? Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify where.
Last highway committee, I think I put together a little spreadsheet showing how I come up with that fifty thousand. And I did have those two sale costs in there as reductions. And then the difference then divided by five years was fifty thousand.
Okay, so you're still anticipating that those dollars be paid back to solid waste as part of the upfront cost that they paid?
Yes, that was our plan, Mr. Chair.
Okay, and this, well, plan and what we do, we're, just want to make sure we're still.
I don't think they offset each other equally.
I, yeah, I don't, yeah, I just, we just need to look into that, this piece, so. All right.
I guess the last item is on page, page five would be our unallocated pages. Just to note that I, that's where we got the fifty thousand dollars for the shop repayment. It's underneath, capital improvements kind of down that area. That you know, we were looking at that. Brian, is that correct or Lori, we are just under two percent increase for highway, is that?
I don't have this number in front of me.
And it changed slightly.
I think you're one point nine.
One point nine eight, I believe it was after.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. We will, as we move forward, we're telling everybody, we'll, if we have further questions, we'll ask you back. Or if there's other clarifications that you know. We're looking at old information already compared to your visits with Brian, so we'll get updates as we go.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll move into committee reports. Commissioner Moser would be prepared to start.
Yep, thank you. Last week, I attended, I think we're calling it the county-owned property slash land management meeting. And it's parcel of acres that the county currently owns that has been set aside for future landfill use. I believe that you requested that we have a discussion as to if we need that entire parcel or not. And it's been kind of preliminarily identified that the west side would face some permitting issues for landfill use. Kirk Rosenberg has said that there's two hundred and twenty acres, a little two twenty, point eight seven. It would possibly be difficult to permit that. And it's currently native prairie, there's, there's some that's a little bit wet, but it's directly north of highway ten. And there was discussion as to if we were to offer that to the public for sale or DNR, Nature Conservancy would, would be interested in that, I believe. The east side is a parcel that would be, could be used for landfill in the future. There was also some discussion as to if we could use gravel tax dollars to use as reclamation for that because those gravel tax dollars can only be used for certain things and there, this area has been mined. I think there's lots to kind of discuss on this. Commissioner Gross and I were both interested in what the, the Felton Prairie piece, clearly there would be challenges offering that up to the general public, which is why we decided to sell it to DNR because of the calcaneous fens. This particular area doesn't have anything that's that obvious as to why a member of the general public couldn't offer it. But there are hesitations from staff to make sure that we disclose that it would possibly be neighboring a landfill in the future. And so I think there are a couple of areas that we're going to be looked at further and we'll go from there, but it was a good meeting. I also had a meeting with the extension intern for twenty seventeen, requested an interview, so I met with her. Our behavioral health for the correctional facility had a meeting where we gave all three of our legislators updates as to what the committee has been going forward on. You got a summary from Rhonda today of our recommendations. I, I think it's a worthwhile committee. I think we were doing great things and, and we're able to use alternative funds to offset the levy increase a little bit. I also attended the diversion authority for the land management meeting last week. A variety of things were discussed, specifically we approved a draft request for qualifications for appraisal services for the valuation of water retention easements. It's something that I've been pushing that we make sure is fully vetted out. And if I missed anything, I think Commissioner Campbell was also there, so. I also attended lakes and prairies meetings last week where we had a branding meeting where we're discussing, there's a new nationwide push to brand that differently because there's lakes and prairies and there's prairie lakes and there's Lakeland Mental Health and it, there's just a lot of lakes and prairies and that type of thing. But specifically to align the titles, something community action of the, so we had a meeting about that. I also had a HR meeting where we discussed the annual review of the executive director. We did complete that. And we had our audit report. The audit looks very clean and good. And also a meeting of note is that lakes and prairies will be having their fifty-second birthday party that they have at the Head Start Gym next door on August second from three thirty to four thirty. If you're around, you can attend that. That concludes my, my committee reports, but I did want to bring up, we've met a handful of times with the small cities in the county. And the last we met was the end of February. And it was noted at that meeting that we felt it was a worthwhile meeting to hear updates from the smaller cities and jurisdictions. And if we were to stay on that six-month target, we would be looking at the end of August. I just wanted to bring it up if this board still wanted to do something of that, but. Open to your feedback.
Well, I think, I think they, you know, the small cities really enjoy it. So I think it's, you know, and again, I go, I go to those to, to hear about what their needs are and how they, how they think we can be of benefit to them, you know. So I, I think it certainly is worthwhile to plan. And I, I think we're. is worthwhile to plan, and I, I think we're kinda deep into Aug, starting to get into August right now, and it's a busy month, but maybe we could shoot for some, something in September.
Well, I thought if we did September, by then, we kinda know a little more of what our budgets look like. We just received from Nancy that piece about-
Yeah, that land.
-the appraisals on, on chemical facilities, so September would be fine.
So why don't we just, Brian, do you wanna kinda work on coordinating that for us?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner Wayland?
I was in a diversion authority meeting last week, and I think we reported earlier, we were doing some work on finding the executive director's position. We still haven't got that resolved yet, but still working on that. And then, other general business, we had the Prairie Lake Solid Waste meeting, and everything's still on track, pretty much financially there for the year. Our litigation there, I think, is resolved, has it been, we haven't finalized that yet though, I believe, so, but it's close, so, yeah. So that worked out in our interest, I believe, that went pretty well for us, or for the, the Prairie Lakes. And we had a solid waste advisory meeting on Thursday, and Steve Moore from the city gave an update on single short, and where that's going, and that's going really well so far. Our firm that's working on the transfer station gave a little update, and that's all ready to go if we get the money, so it's, you know, everything's in place, as long as we find the six or seven million dollars we need to help keep it going on track, so. That was it for me.
All right.
Hey, I was on land management, which Commissioner Mojo already reported on. The one thing we looked at, the one area that we're, that parcel we're looking at selling, we're looking at squaring it off a little bit more, go by section lines, stuff like that, so other than that, nothing further than that.
That's in Riverton, the one in Riverton?
Yeah, the one in Riverton, yeah. Just to square that line, we're gonna offer, we'll see if I can square it off a little bit. Next thing, I went to behavioral commission, which also Commissioner Mojo reported on. The one thing I found interesting was that in our chair, we've got around thirty-five percent of residents from North Dakota in there, and the funds that we receive from the state for behavioral health things can't be used for North Dakota residents, so it's sorta, you know, you're looking at thirty-five percent of the people that are in there, probably, we can't, we're gonna, I mean, how are we gonna assist them, and stuff like that, you know, since we can't use the Minnesota funds for that. Other than that, I had the building committee, that were capital improvement, which we already discussed with the improvement of the Batumna's overway. That was a-
Commissioner Eni?
All I had was the capital improvement meeting yesterday, with the recommendation that we approved the revised alternate for the FSC parking lot.
You also had insurance committee?
Oh yeah, I had the insurance meeting thus, last week, yes. And we were going, we're going to have further discussions on that subject. It was very interesting, wide-ranging, covered a lot of ground, a lot of details in that.
Very good, thank you. All right, I had a lot of meetings last week. We did have the insurance committee meeting, and we, we got a presentation from Lakes Country Service Co-op and then Blue Cross, and we had quite a good discussion. I think we have some, we certainly, the insurance committee has some long-term goals and objectives that we wanna cover, and we're proceeding to go through those. I know Commissioner Mojo, you raised the issue about certain, you know, different types of coverage is available, so we are studying all those closely. We're trying to, you know, we, we understand that, that these annual significant increases, we need to do something to help offset those somehow, and it was a really good discussion, and our, our, our group of county employees are really putting some good input into that. Then the, we did have the Prairie Lake Solid Waste, as Commissioner Wayland mentioned. That part did, we did, the main issue was the litigation piece, and we did, we have come to a settled agreement, settled dollar amount, and it's good in, in our behalf, and it's, it's right down, just now down to crossing all the Ts and dotting the Is on the final paperwork. Hopefully, by this month sometime, that will be done. We did, the budget's been discussed quite a bit, and, and I think we're in much better shape there. Where, I think I might've reported before, we're trying to get them to start an Internal Service Fund component, like, like we have here, so we asked Brian to incorporate a ten-thousand-dollar-a-month payment to, to go towards Internal Service Fund while they, they do the inventory of the, so that, you know, for example, they, you know, they, they need to replace a, a dozer, come up pretty soon, there's no money for it, you know, so, so we're trying to get that thought process. As a matter of fact, we're even doing that, even with our own county solid waste, we're working with Kirk to develop that, that, and Lori are doing that, so. Then we had the, I had the diversion authority public outreach meeting, and we got reports on, on meetings with the Oxbow and Pleasant Township meetings. There's more discussion on the FEMA Quo Mar information, when that comes out and it's finalized. We talked a little bit about the, you know, we're trying to establish some more meetings with our Minnesota delegation, and also we gave an update on that litigation that went And that's that. I do have a, we do have a crisis communication thing that we're developing, in the event that some crisis were to occur, whether it's during construction, or when it would be operational, if anybody ever had interest in seeing that. And also, they have a North Dakota Water Topics Report that they give, and it's just an update on a lot of information on diversion, we can, we're gonna get, try to prepare that for the Minnesota side as well. Land management, Commissioner Mojo did talk about that, I don't think I need to address any more of that. Our solid waste advisory committee meeting, that Commissioner Wayland also talked about, we did get a good report, and we, the landfill has a new way to show what, what all goes into landfill, it's kind of a neat deal that was there, and we said goodbye to Maggie Gruber from the Green Corps, she'll be finished here in a couple weeks, and thanked her for her service. And then we had the actual diversion meeting, and that one was really non-eventful for, we, I think we spent some time talking about the executive director position again, that's been put on hold while they do some more review. And that's all I have. Brian?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, I'll try to go through these things. I set those posters up behind you for your consideration, I guess after sitting here and looking at them, maybe it's a little too cluttery, but just looking for some feedback. Maybe back in the back corner, as you walk in, would be a, a nice display for them to, other than up there, but they're nice pictures anyway, and I thought there were two big projects that are going on in the county, but maybe back there would be better.
Well, it's pretty, you know, it's pretty important right now, and I, you know, I think, you know, there's a lot of work going on, and it's, we should be proud of those things that we're going on it, and, you know, we can jiggle around it.
Okay, well, if you stumble over it, you could throw them at me, so I, I, anyway, see where they, if you wanna do it, maybe a couple weeks or something.
Or another, another thing you could possibly do with them is set them down at the entrance.
Yeah.
You know, where people-
We'll see them.
Where the citizens that are coming in can see them. That might even be a better place to put them, Brian, to be at.
Yeah, there's, there's one down there too.
Hmm?
There's one down there too.
Okay, well, I'm sure so, I'm sure they're there.
I think over here is fine. Come on, that wall, that's fine, people can look at that, yeah.
Okay, sounds good. The insurance committee's already been talked about, yes, I think that's going into a real positive direction of the long term. The county land manager's already been talked about, attended that meeting. Behavior health has been talked about. I, I guess I really have to give acknowledgement to our commissioners and the committee, they've really, you guys assigned that, some real important functions to them, and I think they've really worked through a seven-point strategy on that, and come up with a budget that's, that's affordable, and I, I think it's really something to be worthy of. We went through the Highway Department budget, as you heard today. I had a meeting with Kirk in regards to solid waste, and, and the strategies on, on moving forward on there, we talked quite a while about that. Lori and I met with Rhonda in reference to this social service budget you had the presentation on today. Last Thursday, we had another Lake Fifteen meeting, and I think we actually made some progress. We had some new members there, and they're actually willing to focus on some things that we have some control over. We are in the process of looking at a violation that has occurred out there in regards to the thousand feet of the lake shore, so we'll be working on that. I attended the FM diversion meeting. We had the committee met yesterday in reference to the Family Service Center parking lot, you brought up to date on that. We did have another meeting, or a meeting yesterday in regards to juvenile transportation, transportation of juveniles that are in the custody of the court, and how do they get to the different facilities, and probation is having a concern in regards to their transportation of it, and yet, it's not under the authority of the sheriff's office, so we have to work through some things on, on that, that Rhonda and Janelle are working on. Personnel evaluations, again, that's ongoing, and just, I guess, for your entertainment, you will have my evaluation on next week's board agenda, so if you're gonna really have a good ti- good laugh.
That could be on the table.
Yeah, it could be. And then you have that night, or nineteen, I had lunch in today too, so just a reminder of that. And that's about it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Twenty minutes ago.
Did it already start?
Started at eleven.
Oh, all right, well, we're late. All right, thank you, we're adjourned.
Where's that meeting, so right off Main Avenue?